All right, good evening, everyone. And welcome to tonight's Brisbane City Council meeting. If you would please join us for the flag salute. Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all City Council members are present.
All right. Do you have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda as is?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Again, welcome to tonight's meeting. This is the Council's first crack at the Baylands development. This is a multi -- there's been a multi-year process. Recently, the Planning Commission had made their recommendations to the Council in regards to the EIR and the planning for the site. And so now it's the Council's turn to evaluate both those items and make its recommendation at the end of the process. And I think we all know that the Baylands is one of the largest undeveloped, developable pieces of land in the Bay Area. And, you know, this is a huge project, large undertaking. It would be a huge project for any city. And so that's why it is so important that we take a responsible approach to planning for this site. You know, Brisbane prides itself on being engaged, aware, and, you know, in wanting responsible development. Just behind us, we have our industrial park. And that's about a 250-acre area that, you know, has great companies working there. Chenkey Bakery, Alta Motors, they make electric bicycles. Purcell Murray, making high-end appliances. We have exciting economic development opportunities out at Sierra Point. Recently, at our September 1st meeting here in this room, the Council with great leadership and also leadership from the community moved forward with our Parkside Precise Plan in a way that brings affordable housing to Brisbane, but does it in a smart way. You know, ties it to public transportation and amenities like retail and restaurants, recreation and our community park and civic services. And so, you know, that is just an excellent example of what this Council is capable of doing in regards to working with the community to put forth a smart and sustainable plan. You know, last year, former Mayor Terry O'Connell received the Golden Beacon Award from the Institute of Local Government in regards to addressing climate change, greenhouse gases, and reducing energy use. And we were one of the first cities to receive such an award. Next week, I will be going down to Southern California at the Lake of California Cities Conference, and I will receive, on behalf of our city, the Platinum Level Spotlight Award for Sustainability Best Practices.
We were the first city and only city to receive the gold award, now the platinum.
Yes, absolutely, Clark. You know, like I said, you know, our city, our community is very, very engaged. For that Parkside Precise Plan, we held a pop-up workshop where we shut down Old County Road for several hours, and we had about 300 people attend that event. You know, and just think about it, here we are, this town of 4,300 people, and we had about 300 people show up to provide their vision, their input for bringing affordable housing to Brisbane, but also just to really to provide a new vision for the entryway to our city. One of the groups that I want to recognize, because they did just a fabulous job, put in tremendous amount of hours, and that's the Brisbane Citizen Group. And that was led by former Mayor and Councilmember Anya Miller. She was the chair. And through their great effort, I mean, they put in so many hours in the, you know, providing comments in the draft EIR session. And we probably have the most robust comment session for a draft EIR in the state of California. And thank you, Anya, and all those that were part of that. And to help the city provide a vision for the Baylands, the Council, before I was on the Council, decided that they would move forward with creating a sustainability framework. And so that task, the Council put it on to two members of their advisory groups, myself, I was a Planning Commissioner at the time, and former Councilmember and Mayor Ray Miller, who was part of the Open Space Ecology Committee. And then eventually, as we moved forward with the process, we brought in representatives, one from Park and Rec, one from the Planning Commission, and a member from the Open Space Ecology Committee. The Planning Commission member was Dave Reinhardt. The Park and Rec Commissioners were Chris Hart and Renee Marmian. And Glenn Fieldman represented Open Space Ecology. And so, you know, how do you create a sustainability framework? Where do you start? And so, there's a project in Roanoke Park called Sonoma Mountain Village. And so Ray and myself, we went up there to check it out. And we were very, very impressed. The developer, Cottin Enterprises, they decided that they were going to be a one-planet living development. And so, we checked out their sustainability framework. We thought, you know, that's a great way to incorporate ideas and sustainability practices into a vision. And so, we incorporated their framework. And when, actually, what we did was, we took the Sonoma Mountain Village one-planet living plan, and we took out Sonoma Mountain Village, and we replaced it with the Baylands. And then we took out Roanoke Park, and we replaced it with Brisbane. And of course, we took out all the things that were pertinent to their project, and we just left the things that you would normally have in a sustainability framework. And that gave us a great foundation from which to then starting to add all the things that are important to Brisbane, and then also all the amazing things that are happening, not just in the area, but throughout the world. And, you know, one of the things that I'm really proud of that document is that it was written by the community, really. It was. I mean, we decided that, the committee, that we were gonna write it. And of course, we did have help from our consultant, and especially Andrea Traver from the Integral Group. She came on about halfway through the process, and she was dynamite. She was fantastic. And I hope that she continues to be a part of this process, because she provided the teeth. We provided the, you know, kind of the, those nice things, but she provided the implementation strategy, the key performance indicators that are necessary to make sure that any sustainability framework, if it gets incorporated into a plan, is gonna have something that holds weight. And so, we had that framework vetted by all of our advisory groups, you know, committees and commissions. And that really helped the Council to embrace the framework. I want to thank our Planning Commission for recommending that the sustainability framework be integrated into the general plan. General plans are general, but they provide the vision, the direction, that, you know, certain areas should be planned for. And so here, having this sustainability framework with all of these sustainable aspirations makes sense. And I want to thank the Planning Commission, not only for making that recommendation, but just for all the hours that they put into this process. I mean, 11 months of hearing testimony, reading, you know, thick volumes of information. And it was a very daunting task, so thank you for all your work. Now, lately, there's been a lot of chatter about housing out in the Baylands. You know, recently, I was quoted in one of the San Francisco newspapers that caused quite a bit of a firestorm. And, you know, that quote was that San Francisco--
Like misquoted?
Absolutely. It was misquoted, and, but, you know, I wanted to set the record straight on it. And so, that quote was that San Francisco will provide the housing, and that Brisbane will provide the commercial. And, you know, as a Councilmember and Mayor, I mean, I don't have that type of authority to, you know, have that be the case. And, you know, that is so premature in the process. I mean, we have, you know, there are steps to take, and eventually, the Council will discuss housing, but not at this time. And so, I just want to say what I did say. And that is, you know, because the area is a by-county planned development area, there are some people who think that housing should be coming from San Francisco, because they are developing so much housing out there, and that the commercial part should come from Brisbane, the jobs. Now, we know that, you know, because of this area being tied together, that it is essential that both Brisbane and San Francisco work together, that uses aren't overlapping. We want to make sure that they're compatible with each other. You know, in our sustainability framework, we do mention housing, but we do it in a way that respects the general plan. Our general plan prohibits housing, because the site is contaminated, right? One side is San Francisco's former dump, the other side is a former rail yard. The site is complicated. It isn't just a mound of dirt out there. It's got some issues. And those are issues that we're gonna have to work through. Now, of course, you know, the Planning Commission has made their recommendation to prohibit housing. Now, that is a recommendation. It's not a decision. It's a recommendation, and it's one of the things that the Council will evaluate. We have a lot of, you know, plans that are before us that we have to do in the proper manner. I mean, you expect us to be fair, to be thorough, and to be responsible. And there's a process that is, you know, before us, and we are obligated to fulfill that process in its entirety. The Baylands is a regional project, just like, you know, development out at Oyster Point or Bay Meadows or the Transbay Terminal, because they, you know, the site, the project themselves, create regional impacts, whether it's housing or transportation, taxes, job creation, right? We're all part of this area. And thus, the, you know, the Baylands is also a regional project as well. However, you know, all of these projects were decided at the local level. And thus, the Baylands will be decided by the city of Brisbane. That's the way the law has it, and that's what will occur. Now, I know there's a lot of folks who are not from Brisbane here. And I appreciate that you coming, for you coming to our meeting tonight and the information that you have provided. I mean, it is so important for us to get that input, you know, and to have a successful development. And I hope that you continue to participate and be enthusiastic about what we're trying to do with the Baylands project. You know, when you think about the sustainability framework, it is really a collection of best practices, not just from the area, but all over the globe. And so, you know, when you think of, you know, the things that are in the framework in regards to transportation, or energy generation, or how we deal with waste and water, I mean, if the goals in the sustainability framework were fully implemented into the planning process, we would not only create one of the most sustainable developments in the country, but in the world. And so, that is, it's an exciting opportunity, and it's also, you know, a little nervous, too, right? Because we are this small community. But I have so much confidence in who we are and what we believe in. And so, I am, again, very excited about working with my citizens. I'm excited about working with my council colleagues, staff, working with the developer. I mean, it is essential that if we're going to have a successful, sustainable development, we need to have collaboration with UPC. You know, when you look at the survey, 78% of the people in this, that were surveyed, said that it is a smart idea to have collaboration with the developer. And I agree with that. You know, and of course, you know, others' entities. Again, please participate in the process. So, I want to thank you all again for being here. And if the other Councilmembers want to have some opening statements, I'll go into the layout of the rest of the agenda for tonight.
I'd rather just get into it and hear what this is all about.
All right. So, first off, we're gonna start off with the presentation from our EIR consultant, Lloyd Zola. And he will just get us up to speed on the process, and then give us, you know, a layout of the decision-making process for the future, for moving forward. After that, the Council will have questions and answers, or we'll do a question-and-answer session with Lloyd and staff, and then we'll open it up to public comment. And we do have quite a few folks in the room tonight. You know, typically, we have five minutes to talk. That's gonna probably be very, very difficult to do tonight. And so, what I'd like to do is, you know, let's go with, say, let's go with three minutes. And if we find ourselves being, you know, just having a hard time getting through the evening, then we might have to cut it down to two. Or if we're moving through it, and some folks that wanted to speak a little bit longer, add an extra two minutes, we'll bring you back. All right. So, Lloyd, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, before Lloyd gets started, I just wanted to clarify, for the Council and the audience benefit, this is a workshop. It's not a public hearing, and there'll be no City Council decision happening tonight. This is merely an informational workshop.
Hi.
Lloyd.
What I'll start with are, as you mentioned, Mayor, this is a complex proposal in front of you, and there are a number of different components to the decision that ultimately you will be asked to make. And first of all, what I'd like to talk about is, what are the various components of this thing we call Baylands development? It's not just a single development. There is in front of the Council, and it analyzed in the EIR, something called a concept plan. There's a general plan amendment. I'll explain each of these in more detail. A specific plan. There's a proposed water supply agreement. There is recology's proposal to expand their facility, and then there is site remediation, and a formal closure of the landfill pursuant to Title 27 of state law. And that remediation is actually subject to state authority of the Regional Water Quality Control Board and Department of Toxic Substances Control. So, the concept plans. This is a general plan level concept of the development, of development for the Baylands. It's required by General Plan Policy 329 to occur prior to or concurrent with a specific plan. So, this is the most general land use discussion that we would have. And the requirement is that it encompass the entirety of the Baylands. So, even if somebody would propose development just on a portion of the Baylands and do a specific plan for that, it needs to be reviewed in the context of the entirety of the Baylands. It includes an illustrative land use plan, a description of uses, development intensity, and a list of studies to be concluded, issues to be resolved. Now, there are four of these scenarios, and then the Commission's recommendation, that are in front of the Council right now. The applicant, UPC, submitted two of these concept plans. One, a developer-sponsored plan, and I'll keep adding detail as we go, as well as an entertainment variant. Several years back, the City Council also requested that two other alternatives be, or two other scenarios be analyzed. Those are identified as a community-prepared plan, as well as a community-prepared plan, and the recology variant, which provides for the expansion of recology site. And what these four scenarios do, the two submitted by the applicant, the two that are community-prepared, is they provide a means in that, in the environmental impact report, of comparing environmental studies of what happens with and without residential development. So, from the beginning, the city has looked at analyzing what happens with and without. The Planning Commission then reviewed the EIR, conducted a series of public hearings, a series of deliberation meetings, and itself has recommended a concept plan that's inherent in their recommendation, which I will describe in a second. In the developer-sponsored plan, and I'll refer to that as the DSP scenario, 4,000 dwelling units, about 7 million square feet of non-residential use, primarily retail, R&amp;D, office industrial, and some hotel. The DSP, the variant to that, is same number of dwelling units, 4,434 dwelling units, about the same total amount of non-residential use, but this is more hotel rooms and then a larger entertainment component to it. The difference, then, when we look at the CPP scenarios, is no residential development, about 8 million square feet of non-residential development. So, a little bit more non-residential development and no housing, and that provided a comparison for traffic studies and all the other studies we did. A lot of hotel rooms, 1990 hotel rooms, as part of that 8 million square feet. The CPP recology variant then provides, very similar to the CPP scenario, a lot of retail, hotel rooms, R&amp;D, office industrial, but also provides for industrial use, in this case primarily, what would happen if the recology facility expanded as part of the San Francisco Zero Waste Program. So, all of those have been analyzed. There is also in the EIR a renewable energy generation alternative, which was put together by a group of Brisbane residents, and that proposes about 2 million square feet of non-residential development, commercial R&amp;D office, and the recology expansion, but also has a large area south of Geneva, north of Visitation Creek, that would be a renewable energy generation facility. Those are the primary alternatives that we looked at in the EIR. There is a general plan amendment in front of the City Council, and that includes proposed modifications to the general plan that would achieve consistency between these various scenarios with the general plan. One of the key ones being for the, or a couple of the key ones, on the developer-sponsored scenarios, to remove an existing prohibition on residential development and to increase permitted development intensity. So, I will also say that all of those scenarios that are in the EIR propose a greater level of development than is now permitted, or has been permitted, by your general plan since the 1990s. There is also a specific plan that has been proposed by UPC, and that sets forth a series of zoning and development standards. Included in that is the applicant's proposed sustainability framework, the applicant's land use concept, which corresponds to the two developer-sponsored scenarios, conservation and open space plans, circulation plans, utility plans, an implementation plan, as well as the applicant's plan for how they would go about financing the public facilities needed to support the development being proposed. There is a proposed water supply agreement. That right now, there is a memorandum of understanding that exists between the city of Brisbane and Oakdale Irrigation District that would provide about 2,400 acre-feet of water for a period of 50 years. About 400 acre-feet would be used for build-out of the city's general plan outside of the Baylands and the rest within the Baylands. And what is required to actually implement that proposal, what happened after this general plan, specific plan level set of decisions that you will be asked to make at the end of this set of hearings, would be detailed engineering plans, agreements with Oakdale Irrigation District, Modesto Irrigation District, San Francisco, SFPUC, that would implement an actual transfer of water and involve a project-level sequel review. And the reason that land use decision are coming up before this is one of the key questions is, so how much water do we actually need? And that will flow from your land use decision ultimately at the end of your hearings.
No pun intended?
No, it wasn't.
Thank you.
That will result from. Okay. The recology modernization and expansion is included in one of the four scenarios. And what is important for me to point out is that whatever you do with selection of a concept plan, whether it includes recology, whether it doesn't include that expansion, does not commit you as a City Council to approving a specific project at such time as recology submits it to you. It is simply a concept for the ultimate build-out of the Baylands. And should you say, should you include it in a scenario, recology will come forth with a project, may come forth with a specific project that you can approve or not approve or change, or even if you don't include it, they can still come forward. It's simply a concept. There is also, as I pointed out, a component to, that's analyzed in the EIR, that is not under your direct control, even though it's analyzed in the EIR, and that is site remediation and Title 27 landfill closure. So, even though the landfill has not been in operation for a long time, it has not undergone formal closure and capping pursuant to state law. So, there is that, and that I'll refer to as Title 27 closure. And then there are two areas on the west side of the site. At the northern, northwestern portion is Operating Unit Number One, which is part of the former, part of the former rail yard that has contamination. And remediation of that area, OU1, Operating Unit One, is subject to the regulatory authority of the Department of Toxic Substances Control. You are the lead agency for the EIR. That's the reason it's included. But ultimately, the approval of a remedial action plan or changes to it are the statutory or legal, regulatory authority of the DTSC. The area to the south of that is Operating Unit Number Two, which is also part of the former rail yard, subject to remediation plans under the regulatory authority of the Regional Water Quality Control Board. When we get to discussion of process, one of the issues will be, what is the city's role in their regulatory process? So, the jurisdictional authority lays out, you as the city of Brisbane have land use authority over the Baylands. Based on your land use decisions, DTSC, Department of Toxic Substances Control, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, will look at remediation plans to provide a level of safety pursuant to state and federal standards for the land uses you as the city approve. And then also closure of the landfill, which is the formal Title 27 closure, which is a responsibility not only of the Regional Water Quality Control Board, but also San Mateo County Health System. The EIR that you have in front of you provides a programmatic review. The EIR that you have in front of you provides a programmatic review, and DTSC and the regional board will be required as part of their approval authority to undertake project-specific SEQA review of landfill closure and site remediation. There is an environmental impact report that is in front of you, and there are two parts to the review that have occurred so far on the baylands. We have the SEQA review, which is encompassed in the environmental impact report, and what that does is evaluates the physical environmental effects, the impacts of proposed development. It provides mitigation measures and alternatives to reduce or avoid those significant impacts, and essentially to get the environment back to where it was before development. In the EIR, and under SEQA, that document does not make value judgments. It does not look at what may be good or bad for the community. It does not look at what you should or should not approve. It's simply giving you information on what are the physical environmental effects of the various types of development and intensities of development being proposed. Now, on the other hand, your decision, as you make it, and the commission's recommendation are part of a planning review, and what that looks at is, there are a series of also, not only the environmental issues, but social issues, economic effects. There is an opportunity to talk about, as we heard from the public many times during the commission hearings, simply repairing environmental damage isn't enough. We want to see the lagoon improve. We want to see the baylands improve. We want to see it at the end of development better than it is today, and that is part of your planning review. The EIR is not going to get you there. And your planning review, and ultimately your decision, is going to make, include judgments as to what may be good or bad for your community, and what you should or should not approve. The EIR will give you information upon which to base that, but your planning decision at the end is going to go well beyond that EIR. The Brisbane Baylands EIR is what's called a program EIR because there is no physical development. There's not a typical development project that says, here's a site plan, here's a specific building that we're ready to go build, give us approval in the same way that you might have a building proposed at Sierra Point. What you have in front of you with baylands development is the series of rules and policies by which all the subsequent development within the bayland will be judged, but you don't have a physical development project in front of you because it hasn't been proposed. All of the discretionary actions, use permits, site plans, that would result from, that would be subject to the future site-specific development, will go through its own subsequent environmental review. What the EIR includes are mitigation measures, and those measures are required by law to be enforceable. They are mandatory. They are not simply things, oh, it would be nice if you do that mitigation measure. They will be required. They are designed to avoid or reduce significant effects. They're not really there to achieve aspirational goals. It's simply, if there is an impact that is determined to be significant, how do we solve that specific problem, not how do we improve the site? And the mitigation measures, depending on how they're implemented, could have a substantial effect on development as it's currently proposed. Some of the mitigation measures may require a reduction of, or redesign of the project site. We did not look at, oh, we cannot have a mitigation measure that somehow changes the development. The mitigation measures that are in that EIR are the result of significant impacts that were identified and how those get resolved. What you have is a call a final EIR, and that consists of the draft EIR and a final EIR, which is a separate document that includes introduction, but responses to comments. So all the comments that were received on that draft EIR, the mayor referred to one of the citizens committees, and there were a series of committees that provided a lot of comments. So there are all the comments that were received, all the responses, revisions to the draft EIR based on those comments and responses, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and as I mentioned, all the comments that were received. The draft EIR was available to the public for review from June of 2013 until January of 2014. The planning commission held a series of three public hearings also to review and get comments on the draft EIR, and the EIR addresses all of those components of the project that I had mentioned earlier. There are a series of impacts identified in that final EIR that cannot be mitigated to a less-than-significant level, that will be significant even after all mitigation is proposed. Aesthetics, air quality, noise and vibration that relates to the potential for pile driving that would occur under the DSP scenarios, population and housing, traffic. And the traffic impacts are significant and unavoidable under all four scenarios. So just want to be clear, with or without housing, there will be substantial traffic added to the local area. The other impacts are related to utility service systems and water supply. There were a series of alternatives that were looked at in that EIR. What happens if nobody builds anything ever again in the bayland, which is essentially existing conditions? The EIR looked at what happens if we would make no changes to the general plan and we just build out what the general plan says today? It analyzes that renewable energy alternative that I identified earlier, and then also identifies reduction in the size of the DSP, the developer-sponsored plan, and the community-prepared plan. So all of that is part of the analysis. There were a lot of comment letters and a lot of comments. I mentioned the public hearings that were held, and the comments and responses as they are in that final EIR, master responses. So for example, there were a lot of comments received regarding, what is this program EIR, and, or a lot of comments received regarding, how is traffic analyzed in terms of the effect of residential, how much traffic is captured within the site? So there are master responses that deal with individual issues. There are responses to specific comments, so there is a response to every one of those 2,200 comments, and in some cases, the response to a comment says, see the master response or see another specific, response to another specific comment. So those are all there. The mitigation monitoring program identifies how every one of those mitigation measures will actually be implemented, and at the end of this process, should the council approve a land use plan that is substantially different than what's in the EIR, we would ask to go back into that mitigation monitoring program and update the mitigation measures to address the land use as you actually approve it at the end. There are supporting documents that are part of the planning review. Fiscal impact study that looks at costs and revenues to the city, a feasibility analysis that looks at costs associated with site development. The mayor had mentioned the sustainability framework, which sets forth the city's perspective on sustainability principles that would be addressed, and as you mentioned, Mayor, principles, key performance indicators, implementation programs, and this goes beyond just SEQA mitigation into, as you mentioned, aspirational goals for sustainability of the development of the baylands. It's based on one-planet-living principles, as the mayor mentioned, and a series of 10 specific items that were, that are addressed in terms of sustainability, zero-carbon buildings, zero-waste, sustainable transportation, and so on, open space and habitat. All of these are addressed in that sustainability framework. There is a community opinion survey that addresses a wide range of community opinions of Brisbane residents regarding use of the baylands, and the survey was undertaken August through September of last year. The planning commission's recommendation includes first an open-space framework, and what the commission looked at is there are open-space areas that are on the site around which development needs to occur. Any development in the site, no matter what it may be. Things that need to be preserved, the lagoon and adjacent habitat, Ice House Hill, the Visitation Creek corridor, started forming where development might occur on the site. Other open-space concepts that the commission is recommending to you is a bayview park along the bay, some active open space, community gardens, and trails. But along with the open-space framework and looking at how the lagoon, the Ice House Hill, and Visitation Creek form land use, in getting to identifying land use areas, the commission also looked at several of the existing land uses within the site, which is included Caltrain and the rail line that divides the site into east and west, the recology facility, the Kinder Morgan tank farm, are other land uses that they looked at and planned around. So the commission's recommendation in terms of land use identifies 10 different areas, and one of the other land uses that they did look at was the location of the Caltrain station and maintaining parking for the Caltrain. But this is the land use arrangement that commission is recommending. They are also recommending a maximum net increase of 1 to 2 million square feet of non-residential development, so about 1.6 to 2.6 million square feet of development within the area, that the provisions of the sustainability framework become part of the general plan, that they identified several basic principles to be incorporated into the general plan, preserving large unbroken blocks of open space, protecting key habitat, restoring the roundhouse, transit orientation, meaning clustering development in and around the Bay Shore Station, ensuring that the site is safe for future uses, in particular looking at hazardous materials issues, and to favor natural solutions for protection from sea level rise. The commission also recommended that the general plan specify the process for the city's review of remediation, so that the city be an active participant in what DTSC and the regional board do in relation to site remediation remedial action plans, Title 27 closure, and the sustainability framework also looks at that same process, and it starts with city determining land use and then moving to the regulatory responsibilities of those two agencies. Specifying the relationship between proposed water supply agreement and site development, and in the hearings, there was a little bit of which comes first? How do we approve development without having assured water supply? But it also became, how do we know how much water supply we need without having land use? And so that basic process I had described earlier, which is a general plan land use decision, then negotiating actual agreements on water supply, and then moving forward with agreements with the various agencies involved, along with environmental, project-level environmental clearances. There is also a recommendation for preparing police services and fire services facilities plans. No matter how much development is ultimately approved within the baylands, it's going to be a major change in how those services are provided. The commission has recommended that the general plan look at the potential use of the baylands for a high-speed rail maintenance yard. And so that's one of the other realities, or one of the other potentials that the commission looked at in its recommendation, looking at, and recognizing that potential use in terms of saying, whatever it is the high-speed rail authority does on this site, it needs to mitigate its environmental impacts, it needs to provide a benefit to this community and to offset any loss of revenues that that facility might have. The commission has recommended with your land use decision to update zoning regulations to reflect the updated general plan land use, and as we'll talk about in more detail in December, one of the recommendations is to look at the city's level of service standards on roadways and to update those, to look at them as more as goals, because one of the realities that we found in the traffic study is even if no development occurs on the baylands, even if no development occurs in the city, the development approved and proposed within San Francisco, within Daly City, and other surrounding communities, you will find yourselves with your roadway level of service standards being exceeded through no approval of your own. And so that is one of the other things that will, that we will talk about as we go through some of the policy implications of these environmental issues. The commission is recommending denial of UPC's application, and this provides a comparison of what the commission's land use recommendation is to UPC's application, and just shows, you know, some of the reasons that they led from their recommend, land use recommendation. They came to first and then looked at UPC's application. They determined that UPC's applications were not consistent with the land uses they were recommending, so they are recommending denial of UPC's applications. You had a while back, a discussion with the city attorney, and I don't know, maybe a year or so ago, about potential outcomes of this hearings, and you have actually a white paper going back in time. There are several potential outcomes of these hearings. One would be to approve the applicant's proposed general plan amendment, specific plan, as are proposed or with minor revisions, which would require certification of the EIR. You have the option of asking for major modifications to the applicant's proposal, and in that case, what you could do is simply identify the types of major modifications you would want the applicant to make, rather than trying to rewrite their application for them, simply give direction to the applicant, say, come back with this and we'd be willing to approve it. And in that case, you would have the option of either certifying the EIR or saying, we'll certify the EIR when you bring those major changes back to us. One option would be to deny the applicant's proposed general plan amendment with no additional land use policy, which would simply say, we will let our existing general plan stand as is. That would not require certification of the EIR. Or if you denied the applicant's proposed general plan amendment, you could approve the planning commission's recommendation with major modifications, minor modifications, and in the same way, if you had minor modification to the commission's recommendation, that would require SEQA or require certification of the EIR. If you looked at that commission recommendation, made major modifications to it, again, identify the types of revisions you would want, and we can bring you back, staff level, the specific wording that would go with that before you took any action. And approving that with major modification would ultimately require certification of the EIR. You could also approve land use and policy revisions to the general plan based on the EIR alternatives, or a totally new land use concept that you came up with as a result of your hearings and deliberations. The simple way of looking at it is, an approval of anything will require certification of the EIR. And I'm at the end. Just to remind the council, the audience, that this is a workshop, this is the first of a series of meetings that will be held on the baylands, and will follow up the next public hearing, is right now scheduled for November 17th, and each of the hearings that will follow will look at in depth some of the detailed subjects and the related land use policies, and how various environmental policies, land use policies will affect your land use decisions. So in November, we'll look at site remediation. In December, we'll look at traffic and related issues, water supply issues, public services issues in January of next year, and then in February of next year, looking at other environmental issues, March economics, and then wrap it up with a detailed discussion of land use issues and planning issues, or policy implications of your various choices, and then deliberations. And so with that, there we are.
All right, thank you, Lloyd, for that overview. Any questions? Very extensive.
Here's a first, I've never had a presentation shared before. I'm going to mark this down. Do you have any question? I'd be glad to take.
Clark?
I have one, Lloyd, just, it kind of strikes me, that it kind of sticks out above everything else, is more of the water issue, and water is kind of like gold in California. You know, I mean, there's always, you know, with the drought that we've been through in the last several years, kind of went along with the recession. But we go through the whole process, and at the end of the day, you know, if we approve something, whatever, regardless of what it is, it's going to require some water. And what if Oakdale Irrigation District says, eh, sorry? And what if Oakdale Irrigation District says, eh, sorry?
Then you have a general plan policy that cannot be implemented. But the process that has been laid out is to start with your memorandum of understanding that you have an agreement that is out there, and OID's essentially consent that they will enter into that agreement. We did, we were asked during the planning commission hearings to check back with OID in the middle of the drought, do they stand by it? They did at the planning commission hearings. And with council's consent, we would do the same before the January hearing when we discuss water in particular. But the process would be, you have the ability to sign agreements for up to 2,400 acre feet, which would cover all of the scenarios and alternatives and everything here. If you determine at the end of this process that you wanted lesser density development, then essentially you would proceed to work with OID and MID and SFPUC to do a water supply agreement that would have a lesser amount of water for the baylands because you wouldn't need it. We did as part of the final EIR work with OID to determine, in the drought, can they still deliver this water? And the answer is yes, they can, because the memorandum of understanding, and I'm saying this with the public works director back there, and I know he's going to jump in if I get anything wrong, is water that they have traditionally already diverted. And so this is not a new diversion of water, this is water that they have been delivering for many, many years. But that is the basic process. And so from this programmatic EIR, you would then come back with design of a system, storage requirements, what would happen on a daily basis, because you don't get the same amount of water every day. And that would have its own environmental analysis based on the design of that system. So at this point, we're just at the first step at a general plan level.
Okay. But it's a non-binding agreement right now. And so, I mean, they potentially could pull the rug out from everything, and this basically would be an exercise in futility.
Well, no. And I would say no, because you as a community deciding what your land use policy is for the baylands, and having a community discussion about what is our vision for the baylands, knowing what we know 20-something years after the general plan was adopted, having that kind of updated information, there's nothing futile about relooking at it based on what we know today that we did not know 20 years ago. So if there were not water supply, if this ultimately proved not to be, you would have a land use policy every bit as valid, in some ways, as your existing general plan, and you would then be required, or the developer would, to find a water supply to allow that to actually be built. But it's never futile to have a discussion of land use policy, and what is it that we as a community want?
Yeah, I was thinking more, not the land use policy, but the building of it.
Exactly.
Jumping further ahead.
Yeah. As I said, kind of a little bit joking, you would have a land use policy that could not be implemented without a water supply, which is essentially what you have today.
Yeah.
Except you'd have an updated, a more contemporary land use policy.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
All right Lloyd, any other questions?
No, that's it.
Excuse me, I have a question, following up on the water supply. So while the developer would be the one who would be required to go and find the agreement, the agreement is actually entered into by the city of Brisbane to actually obtain and service the water and sewer and all those kinds of things.
The water supply agreement would be, there'd be a series of different agreements. Would it be an agreement between the city of Brisbane and OID, an agreement between Brisbane and MID, an agreement between Brisbane and SFPUC, and then agreements as to each transfer of water? When I say transfer of water, it's, there's paper transfers that are, we'll keep this and account for it this way, but there would be a series of agreements that followed the actual flow of water and the paper flow of water.
And why is that, that the developer is not the one entering into these agreements?
Because you, well, they're going to pay for it, so let's start there. But it's, I don't know.
Maybe that's Randy's question.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good, and we can have Randy talk, speak to that.
Or a lawyer question.
Or a lawyer question. But the transfer of water goes from public agency to public agency, from water agency to water agency. The city maintains ownership of the water supply, not the applicant, is the way that it's set up.
That's with all developments, correct? All across the state?
That's the way it is set up. There are some places in the state where I know that, well, no, just about everywhere, because even where I know they have looked at, developers have negotiated a water transfer agreement, they have given those water rights to the water supply agency. Because if the water's flowing through a public entity, then the public actually needs to own the water that's in it. And that's something we can have the attorney and public works director speak to in more detail.
When we get to that section, I just wanted to follow up on it. Thank you.
You want to continue with questions?
No, I just wanted to follow up on.
Laura.
Sure, thank you. So you spoke about the SEQA review and the planning review processes. So the public hearing schedule that's before us, does this include the planning review? I see planning is on the calendar for April for land use and planning. Is that the planning review that you're talking about?
Yes, and actually, the planning commission's recommendation, there's two parts to it. One is their land use recommendation, which is the planning commission's planning review, where they say, these are the things that we are recommending to the city council ought to be done to the general plan. And their land use recommendation, all of that is part of their planning review.
Okay.
There is also a part that is their SEQA recommendation of what to do with the EIR.
Okay, and the planning review, will that be looking at the balance of the uses, commercial versus residential? And you had said that we would, the city council would be asking at that point, what's good or bad for the community? And when you say the community, are we supposed to be looking just at the Brisbane community, or the broader Bay Area community, or the regional community? Because we've heard, we've received letters and correspondence talking about the jobs versus housing imbalance, and how that would impact Brisbane and the region.
The planning review looks at, can look at, you have, and as the issue has been laid out, there is very clearly a regional need for housing. And this community has been asked to take on, I'll say some of the burden, because 4,000 housing units isn't a total solution to the entire Bay Area, but you have been asked to take on some of that burden. And that is part of your planning review. You also will look at the, as a community, what is good for our community in Brisbane? And so you look at both the big picture and what is best for your community. So community is purposefully both, the local community and the larger community. And, you know, you have been asked to balance those two. What the larger regional community needs, and some of the considerations that you have for your local community. And ultimately, I will put it, you need to decide as a council, what is best for you, and that also sometimes means taking on a regional need. But ultimately, it is your decision.
Thank you. And my second question is, the planning commission's recommendation of incorporating the sustainability framework into the general plan, what would that exactly mean? Because it's such a large document with a lot of information, how would that impact the general plan in our process going forward?
If that were one of the things that you ultimately decided at the end of this process, if you directed that, yes, that's a good idea. What we would do is actually look at the goals of the sustainability framework. We would look at the key performance indicators and implementation measures, and look at, first of all, what are the subjects that are relevant to a general plan and the various elements of a general plan? Obviously habitat issues are relevant, energy issues are relevant, water issues are relevant. As you get to some of the more detailed issues, maybe not. As you get to sustainable, the kinds of food served in a restaurant is an aspiration for the community, but not necessarily a general plan policy. So we would come back with, based on that direction, with identification of the goals, the key performance indicators, and put it in the form of your existing general plan goals, policies, implementation for your review before actually adopting or approving an actual general plan amendment.
Okay, thank you.
So you can add, subtract, however you wanted to do at that point.
Thank you. No other questions?
Tara.
Thank you very much for a very well-thought-out and overreaching plan and outline of the process we're about to undertake. It really shows how much work has already been done by the community, and how much is been done by the staff and the public, the planning commission. And I really applaud everyone who's been involved in that, and how well they've done, and your organization also. I'm really looking forward to hearing from the communities, and later from the council, and see how we can come up with a really good plan that serves the needs of our community and our region while protecting our community. Because that's who my alliance is to, is to Brisbane, and that's the people I serve. And so, looking at other issues and regional issues, we have to look forward. But truly, I represent Brisbane, and that's the most important thing on my plate, is looking forward to really being the best planning we can for our town. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madison.
Well, I, oh, is this on? Okay. I don't really have any questions. I'm sure I will have plenty, so, because it's the calm before the storm, right? I like Teri M., and I'm sure the rest of the council is really excited to dive into this, and this has been a long time coming, and a lot of work that people have put into it. And I'm confident that we can come up with a plan that will be a great fit for our community. And so I'm, you know, just welcoming of this process, and excited for the future of our city, and what we're going to be able to accomplish together. So, no questions for me, but optimism.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. You know what, I have a couple of questions for you. And first of all, I failed to mention the work that our open space and ecology committee did in regards to the draft EIR. They went through the entire document, right, page by page, and that was huge, and very taxing, but, you know, again, made the draft EIR the best that it can be, which ultimately made the final EIR the best that it can be. And then, as well as the planning commission, I mean, the park and rec commission working on their segment of the draft EIR, the complete streets and safety committee working on their section as well. So Lloyd, on page three, and then also on page five, you know, under key planning environmental concepts, in the bottom of that first paragraph, you know, where it talks about other required components are subject to regulatory review by outside agencies such as the California Department of Toxic Substances Control, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board, not discretionary review by the city of Brisbane. Of course, we know that, you know, how we deal with the contamination is probably the number one issue, right? I mean, you know, we got to make sure that it's safe. And here we have these outside agencies that are the lead agencies, it's not the city being the lead agency. So what role does the city have? How do we work with these agencies to ensure that, you know, safety is, you know, at a comfort for our community?
Ultimately, how you work with them and the process you set up is one of the policy decisions that you as a council will be asked to make. The environmental impact report sets up a process that comes out of a mitigation measure, and basically says, the process for that relationship is the city determines land use at a general plan level. Then DTSC and the regional board undertake the remediation, remedial action plan review process and approval, the Title 27 landfill closure. And only after those plans are done, would the city then entertain approval of a specific plan. So we work at general plan level, remediation, landfill closure, specific plan, the next step is physical remediation of the site, then physical development. So that's the mitigation measure, and we'll do this in a lot more detail, that's the reason for going through specific issues. But that's the basic concept. Beyond that, the sustainability framework suggests that the city retain an independent reviewer, so that the city would look at the information being provided to DTSC and the regional board, evaluate it independently as part of you as a community are putting together your comments to the regional board, to DTSC. And so you would actually participate as part of their review as, we're the local land use agency, here's what we see, and providing that input based on your own consultant, as opposed to just the back and forth between applicant and regional board DTSC. The sustainability framework also refers to what happens if we don't agree. And that will become, we'll discuss that. That's the reason for each one of these identifying related policy issues, and how do you want your general plan to read in terms of site remediation? What is the city's role? So we'll look at both what's in the EIR, and that basic process, and the concepts laid out in the sustainability framework, which go beyond just the flow of, from land use through plans and site remediation, and how should we undertake that review?
Sure. All right, and, you know, talking about the sustainability framework, so the developer has a sustainability framework that's in here, and of course, the city has its own, so that could be confusing to folks, so I'd like for you to just kind of explain the difference.
Okay. There is, as you mentioned, Mayor, there is a bayland sustainability framework document that was put together by a group of officials from the city. That is a document that you reviewed as a council, and was accepted, I believe, last, I can't remember the date. But you have reviewed and accepted.
Yeah, we accepted it, yes.
Right. That is a document that is the city's document. The applicant has also put forward a proposed specific plan. And in that proposed specific plan is a chapter called Sustainability Framework, which is the applicant's proposal. So ultimately, what is approved at the end of this process, whether it's in the specific plan, in the general plan, or however it comes out, you have approval authority over the general plan, you have approval authority over the specific plan. And ultimately, the wording in both documents will be that which you as a council approve. And so you will look at, you know, I would presume that you would look at what is in the city-prepared sustainability framework, what is in the applicant's proposed sustainability framework, and then you would make a policy decision as to, from a council level, this is what we want, and how we will incorporate it, whether into the general plan or into the specific plan, but ultimately, your approval.
Okay. And then, you know, we do have the resolution regarding the planning commission's, you know, recommendations. I mean, is that something that you are planning for us to ask questions about tonight, or is that something for a future evening?
Whenever you have the questions regarding that, I'll be prepared to answer them. I'm not going to dictate you when to ask questions regarding what. The commission's resolution is for your consideration, and there will be issues that come up in each of those hearings at the end as you're doing deliberations. So whenever you have any questions regarding what their resolution says, what it's suggesting, I'd be glad to take them, but whether it's tonight or any other night.
Okay, all right. We've got a lot of folks in the audience, I think we'll get to the public. So, I've got a thick stack here. So, I've got a thick stack here.
Now I could, yeah?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I know I did it wrong last time.
No, 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 it's all good.
There is one seat up here for the people who are standing, if you want to sit down.
So, Ingrid, if you could set the timer to three minutes. So, what will happen is that, you know, the green light will go on, you'll get two and a half minutes, and then the yellow light will go on, and that'll be 30 seconds to wrap it up. If you have something that's just, you've got a long list of stuff and you have it in writing, you know, please, you know, give it to Ingrid. And, you know, we've already have received quite a bit of writ material, and, you know, we read it, it goes into the public record, and it'll be part of the overall process. Okay. So, first off, Karen Cunningham?
Good evening. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Karen Cunningham, Brisbane resident for many, many years, since 1994. Respectfully, I think we need to do a much better job of informing, first of all, our own residents and obviously the residents of other communities and parts of the Bay Area, of what's really going on here. With a full picture of information in hand, not just half-sided editorials, as we've been seeing of late, which have been woefully inadequate and seriously one-sided, I wonder whether the people outside of Brisbane would still be promoting the idea of Baylands housing for their children. Because as it stands today, there are just so many questions that are not answered and so many obvious negatives. The first being that, as it stands, this is a very unsafe thing to do. Whichever way you dice it, whose children would you put out there? The rich? The poor? I wouldn't put anybody's kids out there myself, but that's just me, and this is my request to you. And had I heard, you know, some of these presentations before, maybe I would have some different things to say. And I know there's a lot of people here tonight who want to talk to you about affordable housing. Let me just say, right now, this would not be an affordable housing project in any way, shape, or form. This is a for-profit endeavor if housing goes out on the Baylands. Brisbane has said no to housing for many reasons. One, of course, is our general plan, which we just discussed. Number two, I don't think most of the people who are in this room tonight know that the Baylands is actually a brownfield, and it was just a few points short of being considered a superfund site, not just a brownfield. This piece of land was almost considered a superfund site. That is not being talked about. And strangely, it sits just across the street from Bayshore Boulevard, from Midway Village, an awful development which has had problems since 1976. Midway Village, everybody needs to look it up. As for me, this is about three things. One, safety. Two, safety. And three, safety. When you read the environmental impact information, it is a no-brainer to be cautious to protect everyone moving forward. I would like to point out just three examples that I hope scare the heck out of all of you. One, in the Environmental Impact Report, mercury in Section 4G hazard, as a hazard, is mentioned 17 times, mercury. We didn't even talk about lead. This is especially critical when talking about children and their exposure to mercury or lead, which is also a huge issue. And another is the U.S. Geological Survey has indicated that the Baylands has the highest likelihood of failure in a moderate seismic event. We have to live with that fact forever, and there's nothing we can do about that. And in some places, it is 300 feet to landfill, I'm sorry, 300 feet through landfill to bedrock. How do we reconcile that? Just take a look at the debacle that is now the Millenium Tower in San Francisco. I am sure that the San Francisco residents here tonight are happy with the fact that it is they who are going to be paying that bill. The LLC is dissolved and the money is long gone into the coffers of that developer. Now, being said, I'm sure there are other people who do not want to have any housing for other reasons. They'd rather see the high-speed rail, but that's not for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Karen. Next up is Barbara Evil.
Hi. Greetings, Barbara Evil, Brisbane resident. I could spend my whole time talking about the unsustainable facts that Plan Bay Area intends to accommodate 2 million new residents and has many new transportation plans, but only 15% of the funding it needs to make those transportation improvements. The other 85% of the funding is dedicated to maintenance, not expanding the system. The Bay Area already houses 1 in 35 Californians, and nobody's talking about how far the ecological footprint of 7 million people extends at 24 acres per person. We will need our, how will we meet our energy footprint or our water footprint? We need 1.6 Californians, Californias, just to supply the resources for the San Francisco metropolitan area. Forget anyone else in the state. Do we have the right to growth when the San Francisco metropolitan transfer area has the fourth-highest carbon footprint of a U.S. city? Does it matter if you build housing and jobs along a transit corridor if the bus never comes? And mitigation measures are always termed "when feasible." Others will talk about the perfect storm of pollution that makes Midway Village look like an organic farm, with Schleg to the north, leaking Kinder Morgan tank farm to the south, 100 years of unregulated dumping to the east, and hydrostatic pressure from the bay pushing it west, or the heavy metals and arsenic that are already on the site. I have come to ask that you listen. It really doesn't matter why Brisbane is not going to build housing on the Baylands. Some want to preserve our small town or fear that developers will set their site on the mountains next. Most do not want to make people sick or see developer walk away from the liabilities, phantom transportation funding, or concerned about the lack of water. Some don't want to be a minority in their own home. Who would? The truth is the preponderance of reasons not to build. The Baylands was never zoned for housing. The developer took that idea on their own, and it's not going to work out. Autonomy is the capacity for rational individuals to make informed, uncoherced decisions. Autonomy is the central premises of informed consent. Some are trying to undermine our straight-granted right to make local land use decisions and our own autonomy. The philosopher Ian Cain developed the autonomy principle, which states that people choose for themselves unless we can know their interests better than they can. I would put to the council that we who have lived with the Baylands, some of us for generations, know best. We are the people who have read the EIR appendices, reports, histories, sustainability framework, and served on community advisory groups. We who saved San Bruno Mountain and who will be half the first to live and foremost with the consequences of this decision. I would ask the council to uphold the rights of the citizens and the planning commission's land use recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Michael Barnes, and I'm a Brisbane resident. The Bayland Sustainability Framework you adopted illustrates how housing is integral to sustainable development on the Baylands. The citizens of Brisbane reflected this wisdom with their response to your survey question about Baylands housing. In that survey, over half of Brisbane was found to support housing on the old rail yard. Consider the survey results from the quiet, thoughtful citizens who never come to city council meetings, follow the majority of voters who took the time to tell you what you didn't really want to hear. I've supported housing on the Baylands since 2009. What persuaded me was that the rail yard, oh, what persuaded me that the rail yard housing would be safe was my company's move to Mission Bay in 2008. It turns out that Mission Bay is the site of an old rail yard, cleaned up and made safe for housing. Directly out my fifth-floor window, I see the new children's and women's UCSF hospital. I use the ATM and the UCSF grad student housing, and I eat lunch at the new food truck court on Fourth Street across from new apartments. Mission Bay only came alive when housing was built. Many of my San Francisco colleagues have sold their cars. This is why you have heard me say that the Baylands housing between our two active commuter rail lines will allow Baylands residents to live without cars, which produce most of our CO2 in San Mateo County. Some housing on the Baylands will even be affordable. I was part of the planning commission that wrote Brisbane's first inclusionary housing ordinance, requiring a minimum of 10% affordable housing, although we built incentives for a higher percentage, and I'm sure you can do even better. It is disappointing to hear our region talk about taking the Baylands away from Brisbane. The Baylands are not natural open space to be protected like San Bruno Mountain, but a man-made, empty landmass in the middle of the hottest economy on the planet. I worry that this city may induce the state to take over the Baylands or even dissolve our town. Please, don't be the last city council in Brisbane.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Honorable City Council. My name is Kim Folian, and I am a Brisbane resident.
If you could move the mic. There you go. I know my mic goes a little taller. There you go. That's better.
I'm one of the 50% community survey respondents that agree some housing on the Baylands is appropriate. I want the city to proactively work with UPC to negotiate an acceptable number, as well as ensure development is consistent with Brisbane's character, values, and sustainability framework. And I would like it to provide benefits, such as containment and remediation of the site, open space for habitat, trails, sports fields, and parks, grocery store, drugstore, renewable energy, and restoration of the roundhouse. The proposed housing location is about two miles away, so will not impact our small-town feel in Central Brisbane and the ridge. The Baylands can be made safe for housing as it would be subject to all state, regional, and local regulations. There are many examples across the U.S. demonstrating former rail yards can be made safe for housing. Two local examples are Mission Bay and Bridge Court, Emeryville. To safeguard the public's health and safety, which is a high priority to many survey respondents, including me, cities should require independent oversight. This is the most important recommendation made by Chief Fred Lee and Associates in their November 2010 report on the adequacy of the investigation remediation of the Brisbane Baylands. Locating housing near transit and jobs lowers greenhouse gas emissions, which is a requirement of Senate Bill 375. Housing will also help correct our existing jobs housing imbalance that's put local housing out of reach for working families. Since 2010, San Mateo County has created 54,000 new jobs and 3,000 new homes. Brisbane has twice as many jobs as houses. This imbalance is driving working families and our adult children to places like the Central Valley, where they can afford a home. This in turn encourages more paving over farmland for housing and roads and increases driving emissions and sprawl. As of 2003, 80% of the workforce living in Tracy works in the SF Bay Area. The planning commission's refusal to approve a sustainable Baylands plan by including housing has caught the attention of the Bay Area and the state. I'm concerned that if we don't approve a sustainable development that by definition includes housing, we may lose control of the Baylands that our city fathers fought so hard to control. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, good evening. I guess going forth is not too bad. I was a bit disturbed that that stack got shuffled, as I was the first one to turn in the receipt. Tonight, you will hear some elegant statements, whining and crying for housing. These folks live in a vacuum with only dollar signs driving their tears. The bullies are thumping their chest! I ask two things of you tonight. First, allow Brisbane residents to speak first, before the outsiders. At one of the last planning commission meetings, many of tonight's speakers spoke, begging and crying for housing without knowing the facts. Unfortunately, they too, along with corporate media, SF Chronicle, failed to do their due diligence and research the facts. Once these outside speakers spoke, most of them left, so they never bothered to stay and listen to the residents. A few stayed in order to speak again. It's their turn to state until 11:30 or later. And they're crying to the wrong people. We are not the problem. If they want housing, then they need to apply pressure to the developer to clean it up, as required by law. Then, we may consider housing. In 1991, and reaffirmed in 1994 by our general plan adoption, some very wise people made a decision that the city, the people, would not be willing to accept the liability and other risks of knowingly allowing people to live on very toxic land. Recently, after months and months of draft EIRs, final EIRs, public hearings, deliberations, the wise planning commission is to be commended for upholding that vision. The second thing I ask of you tonight is that you too uphold that vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good afternoon, mayors, members of the city council. My name is Corey Smith. I represent the 300 members of the San Francisco Housing Action Coalition. We are a 17-year-old nonprofit that advocate for housing, and I'm here to ask you to build housing because the Bay Area does not have enough of it. It's a 40-year tradition in the Bay Area to greenlight a lot of jobs and not enough homes for the people that want to live here, and it's led to widespread gentrification, loss of communities, displacement, and an affordability crisis that prevents many of myself and my friends that I came here with from ever having the opportunity to own a home here. My job is to talk with communities around San Francisco about what it's like to accept new people into your community, and a lot of people do view me as an outsider, but the problem is, is I don't view myself that way. I am part of your community. The things that happen in San Francisco impact you, and your decisions are going to impact me. So, we're in this together, and I don't understand why we need to become opponents when all of us want the same exact thing. The city of San Francisco is bleeding, and I really view this as an opportunity, to be perfectly honest with you. It's an opportunity to add parks, and it's an opportunity to add schools, and it's an opportunity to add retail to serve your neighborhood communities, and it's an opportunity for transit investments that will help people flow up and down the corridor so we are stopped killing our environment, so we no longer have the fourth-largest carbon footprint. And if you look at where carbon footprints are concentrated in the Bay Area, it is environmentally friendly to be dense. It's also an opportunity to do what is right in the face of political pressure. To take a quote from one of my favorite NBA players, Robert Ory, Big Shot Bob, "Pressure either bursts a pipe or it shines a diamond." And I know many of you view your city, your town, as a diamond, and I would love to take that diamond all over the Bay Area and show people what it's like to accept others. Please, please do what's right. We've been following this for a long time. We've done our research. We've been coming to meetings in Brisbane for nearly one year now. We've tried to talk to as many people as we can, educate about what's going on, and when we knew this meeting was coming up, my organization, an allied organization, Grow San Francisco, started to talk in the meeting. San Francisco started to talk to media members in San Francisco, saying, "We have to do something. We have to make sure people are aware of what's happening here." And, we're not going to ask everybody that we brought today to speak, out of respect of your time and respect to their time, but I would ask everybody behind me, if you do support building housing on the Bayland site, please raise your hand.
Are you going to live there? Yeah. Yeah.
Excuse me, hey, you know what? We have a process, alright? And everyone who comes at the podium has something important to say, right? Isn't that one person's view is diminished from someone else's? So let's just respect the process, and we'll move through the meeting in a productive way. Alright, so Corey, do you have...
I'm just asking you to do what's right for our community. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so next up is Tim Cohen. Cohen, sorry. I, yeah, hard to see that H.
Good evening, Mayor Lentz and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm the executive director of the San Francisco Housing Action Coalition, and we've followed housing development for 17 years, and this is the first project we've done that, outside of San Francisco, and there's a reason for that. It's caused a lot of folks, it's grabbed a lot of folks' attention. And, I wanted to say that, you know, I'm trying to think of the best analogy. We have a housing crisis that is tearing the city apart. It's a housing shortage, but it's a regional problem, and it's affecting, its root is the lack of housing production around the Bay Area. This project, the preferred alternative that you have, just sort of seems to grab our attention, say, "Wow, that's how planning was done in the 70s. That's not how it's being done now." The best analogy I can think of is something like building a large coal-fired power plant with a large smokestack, and if people come out and say, "Wait a minute, what are you doing?", the people surrounding, and you say, "Well, we just need the cheap electricity", all that other stuff, "It's not our problem." And that's what it looks like a little bit, is that the decisions you make will be felt outside of this, and the idea that a large project that will bring thousands of workers here with no housing, it just, it's inescapably clear, "Well, they're going to have to go somewhere else," and it's no longer possible to plan land use that way. There's a significant weakness in the sustainability plan I saw, that you're using LOS, Level of Service, which is a way of evaluating it, that what is its convenience or impact on automobile usage? That's quick, the state of California is quickly moving away from that to VMT, Vehicle Miles Traveled. What does it do to greenhouse gas emissions? That's the true measure of sustainability. And, my understanding is that the preferred alternative of the city has doubled the carbon footprint of something that's much denser with much more housing, and makes a major investment in transit improvement. And then I guess the last thing I'd tell you is, as a recovering geologist, I spent 10 years as a contractor with a consulting company to the US EPA, doing nothing but environmental remediation of brownfield sites and polluted sites, and what's being proposed here is perfectly routine. It's been done in hundreds and hundreds of communities across the United States, with strict regulatory environment and rules for how it's cleaned up and put back into productive use. That's not an obstacle to you. Deciding how you use the land and how you treat your neighbors, as far as accepting housing and your role in the Bay Area, that's the real tough issue you're going to have to face. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Tom.
Hi, I run an organization, Laura Clark, called Grow San Francisco, and we advocate for housing throughout the Bay Area. And I want to sort of follow up on a couple of points that were made. The Bay Area operates as one. We have over 100 different municipalities that make up the economically-integrated Bay Area, and no longer can these communities afford to think of themselves as isolated communities, and no longer can we afford to continue to chronically underbuild housing. We have spent decades in the Bay Area underbuilding housing. We have created more sprawl, we have created less environmentally-friendly communities, we have increased our segregation, both economically and racially, by this chronic underbuilding of housing. I want you guys to think about where your kids are going to live. Right now, millennials are being priced out of the Bay Area. This is a real tragedy. If you continue down this path of denying housing, there will be none for your children. This is a regional crisis. I want everybody who's a millennial in here who feels stunted by the lack of housing to raise their hands. This is a generational crisis, and I beg you to not deny us our futures. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Brian Hanlon, please.
Hi, my name is Brian Hanlon. I'm the co-founder of CARLA, the California Renters Legal Advocacy and Education Fund. We try to make housing more affordable or accessible throughout the state. Now, I'm a little bit upset at the previous speaker. You managed to steal my intro about there being 101 municipalities in the Bay Area, and Brisbane is not an island. It is one of 101. I'd like to address a question that Ms. Liu asked earlier about this sort of balance between regional planning and local planning. Well, the State Supreme Court has weighed in on this issue. When you're making land use decisions that have a significant impact on non-residents, you have an obligation to take into account the regional welfare of these decisions. And, you know, the preferred policy alternative would unquestionably have a significant impact upon non-residents in neighboring jurisdictions. I, you know, also ask that you take your obligations under SB 375 and other California environmental laws seriously, as a number of speakers have already tested. You know, remediation has been successfully done in many places all over the country. That is not an obstacle to this project. What would be a real shame is if, in this sort of misguided notion of sustainability, where you think excluding people is somehow green, that you deny the necessary density for this project to enable people to live a carless lifestyle. On a personal note, I'd just like to finish that I am a recently displaced San Franciscan, now living in Oakland, and this is sad for a lot of reasons, one of which, I really love biking through Brisbane. I biked up San Bruno countless times. It's absolutely beautiful, a real regional treasure, and I think that more people should have the opportunity to enjoy this, what you have. I'd like to pass out a letter that I signed for my organization. If you're typing to find that reference, it's on the letter, which lays out the desires of my organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just give it to Ingrid, please. Alright, so we have 28 more slips. I think at three minutes a pop, you know, we'll be good, but, well, you know what? If we do three minutes and we stick to the three minutes, you see that light turn yellow? Please wrap it up. Don't stay past the red mark, okay? Then we can get everybody to have at least three minutes. Alright, so Bill Detmer?
My name is Bill Detmer, long-term resident of Brisbane. Mayor Cliff Lentz said that this is the largest developable land in the area, and that means developable, it's assuming that it's safe, and I think everyone here is concerned, is it safe? And here's my thing I got to hold up here. The question I had from the beginning is, is this area locally, is it, could it liquefy? Could it hurt people? And, I don't know. I don't know, because earthquakes can get very, very large, and if you're on unconsolidated sediments, like this building, things can fail, you know? And so, there's a risk. There's a risk of us being here tonight, that if there was a big enough earthquake, and that rear wall fell, and then this is a big concrete slab, and the roof kind of gets sucked over this way, it could actually fall in and kill us, you know? This is a risk we live with. We live, you know, we go down the freeway, we do, you know, we take the chances, and this is what we're doing. So, I look around, I say, "Well, our public safety building's on fill. The corp yard, that's on garbage. In fact, Sierra Point Lumber is on fill and garbage, and so, you know, it's something we apparently are living with, and also, Sierra Point, that's garbage. And, you know, one day the trucks stopped dumping over here, and they started dumping over on Sierra Point, so it's kind of the same garbage, you know? And we have picnic tables, and we have pathways, and so we make the decision that it's worth the risk. I don't know if it's worth living out there or not, but I would wager that some people would be willing to take the risk to live on top of this dirt pile. I have faith that the EPA and all these governmental agencies are on it. I don't think they're crooked. I agree with these people that the millennials are in a tough spot. You know, our kids can't afford to live here. Whether there's going to be affordable housing there, I don't know. It's a dump, but could you imagine that, you know, one person who doesn't have to drive from Antioch, that's a thousand pounds of carbon saved a year? You know, you could have a million pounds of carbon saved by them coming here, and, oh, let me get my, losing my thoughts here. Okay, so is it, there's always going to be a risk with everything we do. So, if they're willing to take the risk, and they're willing to pay the money to live there, and somebody's willing to build the place, and we need housing, you know, our kids need housing, and could you imagine the person that no longer has to commute from Antioch, and he wakes up, and he's over, he has a view of the East Bay, you know, he's over there by the freeway, or he's over the lagoon, and he's looking out there at the migratory birds? It would be wonderful, and we could share this, and it's not going to, they're not going to come into Brisbane and, you know, hurt us or nothing. It's kind of like the ridge people. They don't, they're okay, you know? We're living with, you know? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Tom B.
So I believe that all of us here are concerned with the environmental and social health of the Bay Area, and it's interesting that sea level rise is rightly such a large component of this planning process, and it makes you wonder how we got here. The US contains 5% of the world's population, but produces 25% of its greenhouse gases. In transportation, pretty much all cars are the number-one source of greenhouse gas in the US. We are unique in this regard in the world, because of the land use policies in most American towns since World War II. Most American towns do not have existing direct rail service into a major hub, as Brisbane does. To squander such an opportunity to provide climate-friendly commutes for people is unthinkable to me. Additionally, I believe that there is a social obligation to provide more housing to people in the Bay Area. The poorest and most disadvantaged people in the Bay, tens of thousands of black and Latino people in particular, are being forced out of their communities and into the Central Valley to find housing, further contributing to the pollution crisis that threatens to submerge huge parts of our region. We must begin to right the wrongs of the past and build more housing, and build it near train stations like the one here. So I hope that you work your hardest with the engineers and the developers to make sure that this land is safe, as I believe it's possible to build housing safely on this land, and build as much housing as is appropriate, given its location. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Tom. Rachel Trigueros? Did I pronounce it correctly?
No. Rochelle Trigueros.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay. Hi, my name's Rochelle Trigueros. I'm a policy manager at the Bay Area Council. We're a regional organization that works on issues related to housing, jobs, transportation, and how they all intersect. Looking at Brisbane's proposal of over 8 million square feet of commercial development and zero housing units, we believe that the city is in violation of the California regional welfare doctrine mentioned earlier, that states' local development decisions must be evaluated against the regional welfare. The Bay Area is experiencing an unprecedented housing crisis. In 2015, the Bay Area added 133,000 jobs, but only 1,600 units of housing, 16,000 units of housing. This jobs-housing imbalance is driving up costs, it's displacing our lowest-income residents, and it's forcing our workforce to the outskirts of the region where they face extreme commutes that threaten to derail our greenhouse gas reduction goals. The Baylands is a regionally-significant site. Not only is it at the heart of the region, it's also next to regionally-funded transportation infrastructure. You can't create 8 million square feet of commercial development and not share the housing obligation. Brisbane needs to step up and be part of the solution, not part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle. Aaron Eckhaus?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for listening to me today. I've come here from Berkeley, because I want to tell you all that this is not strictly a local issue here in Brisbane. I understand it's very important to you, and it's also very important to the rest of us in the region. The San Francisco-area housing crisis is a regional problem, and it needs a regional solution. It's spilling now into the East Bay, it's displacing people in the East Bay, and if we're going to prevent further displacement, if we're going to solve this problem, we need to address it at a regional level, and I hope that Brisbane will be part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Evening, city council, and mayor. Thank you for having me up here tonight to share my feelings about the housing crisis, and I admire you to please keep an open mind, open heart about this issue before us tonight. The Bay Area region has suffered from an extreme drought of residential units and downzoning. This is a dangerous trend. It's time to legalize housing. Brisbane is a Bay Area city integrated into the region and suffers from a job-versus-housing imbalance. Mayor Lentz's comments in the press admit to this imbalance. The city of Brisbane has one shot, being a friendly neighbor, and share the responsibility and the civic duty of resilient and sustainable construction, gentle infill, and housing verticalization within a green belt where the land meets the water on 660 acres of the Baylands. If it chooses not to build housing, the state can certainly take the land off the city's hands and build anyway. Doesn't it make sense, if Treasure Island can be cleaned up and certified by the state of California to be a livable with transit, sewer-water infrastructure, certainly the Baylands can be too. San Francisco is not a perfect example of housing policy. To the city council of Brisbane, we need a strong and solid regional urban planning of the Bay Area. The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few and tax revenues. Please approve this mixed-use development. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Camp?
Good evening, my name's Daniel Camp. I am a renter. So as you can imagine, I'm not in a very good position right now. I'm kind of getting creamed on housing costs, and the reason for that is because the Bay Area, everywhere in the Bay Area, San Francisco and San Mateo Counties especially, have been adding jobs way faster than they've been adding housing, workforce housing recently, for about 40 years. So, you know, what's going on is that when you add a bunch of jobs, but then you don't build... build places for the workers to live, then the housing that you already have becomes a scarce commodity. People have to fight over it. The price goes up and then people that can't afford it have to go somewhere else to where they can't afford and they drive into their jobs instead, which is not good for the environment. You know, there's been a concern, I hear, about, you know, toxic soil. People seem to be using the toxic soil argument to oppose housing but not to oppose hotels or offices. I'll just say that I think that's very telling. Also, there have been comments in the news recently that some people are saying there's, that, you know, Brisbane will build the jobs and San Francisco will provide the housing. But I want to explain why that's a really, really bad strategy. If you get on the, on Bart, going through the Transbay Tube into San Francisco in the morning and out of it in the afternoon, you will see that it is literally packed like sardines. All of those people going into San Francisco in the morning and out at night is the workforce housing that San Francisco has already failed to build. That is San Francisco's workforce housing backlog. They're not going to get to your workforce housing before they solve that problem already. Yeah, oh, one more thing. I've heard a lot of people saying, oh, I guess they don't have time. You know, if Daly City built a giant power plant and all of the pollution was flowing into Brisbane and not polluting Daly City, you'd be pretty upset about that. And if you asked them to stop doing it, to stop driving people out of their homes here and they said, oh, well, you know, it's not our problem, you wouldn't like that. So please treat other communities the way you want to be treated and approve a lot of housing.
Aaron Van Devender.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Aaron Van Devender. I'm from San Francisco and I have a great job up there as a physicist. Unfortunately, finding housing is really tough. I've been lucky enough to have my best friend rent out his basement to me, but I would like to eventually be able to afford a place of my own. Unfortunately, there aren't enough houses to go around in the area. And so that's why I've come here today to urge you to add more housing to the supply in the Bay Area. I think I'd be a great neighbor one day and I look forward to that. I'd like you to know that, you know, that our community is very entwined and myself and all of us in San Francisco will be watching and hoping that you do the right thing with the Baylands. I'd like to briefly read a statement from San Francisco Supervisor Scott Weiner, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. "Good evening, council members. Thank you for your public service and for receiving public feedback on the future of the Baylands. I'm a big believer in regional cooperation and open regional dialogue. I've enjoyed my conversations with Mayor Lentz about regional housing and transportation needs and I'm honored to call him a friend. When it comes to housing and transportation, we must work together as a region to address our housing affordability crisis and our overcrowded public transportation systems, highways, roads, and bridges. We will never solve these problems, city by city. We are working hard to build housing in San Francisco and I have fought for more housing despite anti-housing obstruction by some of my colleagues, including anti-housing obstruction by Supervisor Jane Kim. I and others have been able to prevail and to move housing forward in our city. It's so important for Brisbane to partner with us and to add housing as well. The Baylands is an ideal location for new housing given its proximity to transit. I encourage you to add housing to this project. I look forward to working with you collaboratively to address our shared housing and transportation challenges." Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Aaron.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Prem Lal. I've been a Brisbane resident for almost 14 years now and I've been generating electricity from solar energy for almost all of those 14 years. And I would like to voice my support for the renewable energy plan that has been unanimously approved by our planning commission. I'd also like to question the idea that if you build housing, it's going to be affordable. First of all, this is the San Francisco Bay Area and everybody in the world wants to live here. Just because you build housing, how can you guarantee that it will be affordable? Likewise, how can you guarantee that you will not have a situation as you have in San Francisco right now where all of the properties are being gobbled up and turned into short-term rentals via Airbnb and its competitors? So that people who used to be able to afford to live in San Francisco no longer can because their properties, their rentals have been turned into short-term rentals? And are you aware that if you do try to block short-term rentals in Brisbane, you will make yourself open to lawsuits from Airbnb and its competitors? So to me, that is something I would like to put on the table because nobody seems to be talking about it. Likewise, as far as transit, I support transit. I have a car, but in the three years that I've had it, I've driven it less than 9,000 miles. And I ride the Brisbane Shuttle every day to get to Balboa Park Station and I take Bart to San Francisco's financial district where I work. So indeed, people in Brisbane do use public transportation and I think that should be kept in mind that just because somebody else is saying we should have more public transportation oriented around houses that would create more toxicity instead of something that would reduce our carbon footprint like a renewable energy plan that is being proposed, I think you need to give that a second thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Prem. Navid Safipour? Safipour, sorry.
Good evening. My name's Navid Safipour. I am a San Mateo resident. I currently serve as president of the Peninsula Young Democrats, a young Democrats club for San Mateo County and Northern Santa Clara County. I bring that up not for partisan reasons but for the young aspect of that. My comments tonight are my own, but our club focuses on national, state, and local politics. And our members have especially taken an interest in housing issues locally throughout the region. We've had a number of meetings about it, discussed it, looking at the causes of it. I also want to say before I go on a bit about my own self as an activist because it seems like there's this tension going on over who are these outsiders here? I'm right now campaigning and openly supporting Measure Q in San Mateo for rent stabilization. I have previously spoken out for regulating Airbnb, which you can do while building housing, by the way. And I am not somebody who is here to help a developer. I'm here because I want to see our region solve the housing crisis. And that is why we need you guys to help by including housing in this proposal. To entertain a hypothetical question, if the city of Brisbane were debating whether or not to detonate a nuclear bomb rather than approve a development tonight, or discussing that matter rather, because you're not deciding tonight, would it be fair for you to make that decision based on the concerns of only, without hearing anything from anywhere else in the region? Without question, the answer would be that yes, it would be unfair to not give a heads-up to everyone else. Whether you like it or not, the Bay Area is a region that's interconnected and no city is an island. And this project without housing is a bomb, a bomb of displacement that will send ripples throughout the region. There are already, you know, friends I have and people I know who have had to leave because they can't afford housing. And I'm not necessarily having a super easy time myself. More than 30% of my income goes to rent. So please do include housing when you make that decision. And please also consider looking at the California Legislative Analyst Office's report on this issue that they released in February, which said that even building market-rate housing helps low-income and middle-income people in California as well. So even if it's not subsidized affordable, it will still help people who are low-income and middle-income. And I'll leave you guys to look at that report to determine the analysis, that's very extensive and thorough, as to why that is the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Navid.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Lentz and Honorable City Council Members and hard-working city staff. My name is James Regomez and I'm here representing the San Mateo County Building and Construction Trade Council. The council is comprised of 22 local affiliate unions and over 16,000 highly skilled men and women in the construction industry. This diverse workforce from San Mateo County, many of whom live in the city of Brisbane, they are proud of the work they have done and the work they are going to continue to do in this city and in this county. The jobs have allowed them to live in this county and provide for their families. They understand the critical need of moving forward with the Baylands project. Universal Paragon will employ contractors on this project that have signed training agreements with the state of California, DAS, Department of Apprenticeship Standards. These programs are part of the largest privately-funded educational system in the USA. Individuals enrolled in these many programs and that have successfully completed these courses have received the greatest training for construction workers. By completing this program, these fine individuals have completed 2,500 hours to up to 8,000 hours of on-the-job training and classroom training. This makes them the most productive construction workers. This ensures that the future workforce is trained to build these fine projects. They pride themselves on doing the job right the first time, on time, and on budget. By moving forward tonight, the city council will be providing more good-paying jobs with benefits for our members and their families. They will also clear a needed path for the city of Brisbane and the Bay Area to continue adding the parts needed that make this region one of the most innovative places for ideas on the planet. There is a lot of pressure to build large campuses and headquarters for top Bay Area companies, but we need to act now if we want to catch this wave. Within this development, there is a need for housing. You will hear tonight from many people that there is a need for housing. The Bay Area's rapid growth and jobs has thrown housing prices and rents upward to unaffordable levels for all workers, not just low-wage workers. Facebook employees making six figures cannot find housing in the Bay Area. This council has the opportunity to help out by allowing Universal Paragon to build housing on this vast parcel of land. We need to build housing on this site as well as commercial. The fine individuals affiliated with this Building Trade Council are eager to build this and do our part to ensure that we mitigate the jobs-to-housing imbalance. The potential for revenue for the city of Brisbane and the economic benefits and the potential to raise the living standards of those on the peninsula is greater than any other city in recent memory. The Building Trades appreciates the work of your planning commission and the work the city council will do towards developing a plan that not only addresses the needs of their citizens but also the needs of the workforce surrounding region that the Bayland Project requires and offers to the Building Trade Council. The trades stand by to build your vision that your citizens will look upon with great pride. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Kara Cox? Cara Cox? Is it Kara?
Kara.
Kara, okay.
Good evening, council members. I'm a resident of San Mateo. I've never spoken before at a city council meeting for anywhere else than where I live. And I'm just coming to you tonight, as many other people are, because we're heartbreaking, heartbroken at the prospect that this will go through. I mean, just to direct the question back to you, I don't understand why you would want to live on a hill surrounded by crazy traffic in 101 all the time, which is only going to increase. I mean, if your city's great, that's fine, but if it's this isolated beacon on a hill, you can't even get in. I wasn't able to come until after my kids were down and at 8:30, 9 o'clock, it's still packed on 101. I don't know why you want to live this way. History will remember what you do tonight.
Thank you, Kara.
Good evening, Mayor Lentz and council members. I'm Stephanie Reyes. I'm the Deputy CEO of Green Belt Alliance. Green Belt Alliance is a 58-year-old local Bay Area environmental organization working to protect natural and agricultural lands from sprawl development and help cities grow sustainably. Since the 1980s, we've provided an independent validation of outstanding infill development projects like the Sonoma Mountain Village project that you mentioned earlier, Mayor Lentz. And after months of careful review, we have endorsed the vision laid out by UPC, which calls for a mix of new homes, shops, jobs, in a walkable neighborhood served by transit. This plan is a great example of environmentally beneficial development. One of the biggest environmental challenges we face here in the region is our shortage of homes near transit and job centers. When people can't afford to live near their job, they end up seeking homes farther and farther away, out towards the edges of the region in places that have few to no transit options, which leads to, as you've heard, more driving, long commutes, air pollution, renowned gas emissions, and water pollution from runoff, and also creates more pressure to pave over our natural and agricultural lands. The housing shortage isn't just bad for the environment, though it also hurts our communities. I'm a San Mateo County resident myself. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old son and he has already had to say goodbye to one beloved caregiver because she had to move too far away because of the housing costs. And I wonder, you know, what about his favorite preschool teacher or music teacher? Will they be here next year or next month? And what about my sister? You know, my son adores his Aunt Becky, but she may have to move away soon because of the high cost of housing. And it's not just me. I'm sure many Brisbane residents have experienced this same thing, stories like these about how the housing shortage really negatively impacts us in our communities. Here in Brisbane, you have an amazing and a unique opportunity to say yes to an abundance of new homes near transit. And doing so would be great for people and for the planet. So I hope you take advantage of that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'd like to start and welcome all the visitors to Brisbane. We do want to hear what you have to say and it's very helpful when you identify who you are and where you live. I appreciate your coming here tonight. I hope that you learn about Brisbane and the Baylands. It's a rather complex issue and not as simplistic as portrayed recently in the Chronicle. It's not just empty dirt. I hope that you leave this meeting with more substantive information as opposed to soundbites coming from San Francisco. Our residents have been emphatic about safe and responsible development to ensure long-term health and habitability. We do not want to act irresponsibly in response to outside pressures. Please let us dispense with mudslinging and misinformation. Brisbane is not San Francisco. Yes, we're feisty. Yes, we demand greater accountability. This is the community that saved the top of our mountain from being recklessly removed to satisfy the demand for view homes. Instead, we preserved a world-renowned biosphere. That's Brisbane. Mistakes are made in hasty decisions pushing development. It's something we'd like to avoid here. I'm hearing statements being made about remediation by people who haven't been adequately involved in our studying the toxic problem. Developers come and go. Look at the Millennial Tower Project. We, in Brisbane, bear the long-term responsibility if the area is uninhabitable in the future. We take that very, very seriously. I'm hearing things said tonight that just aren't true as well. Brisbane did not, not, not push for the commercial development. The developer did. Let's make that really clear tonight. And it has not been approved. That's still subject to a vote by our council. I think the point about Airbnb is very... I think the point about Airbnb is very important. It's relevant. And to that, I would ask, how's that working for you, San Francisco? Thank you.
Clara Johnson?
Good evening.
Excellent.
Clara Johnson. The planning commission had one year of hearings. When Mr. Zola spoke of it, he kind of spoke of it like they'd had a couple of days when it was actually a year-long process. And I want to say that I support their recommendation. And that recommendation includes 1 to 2 million square feet of space, which is a great deal for a town of our size. The EIR that's been reviewed by the planning commission now in front of you is a program-level EIR. It only provides a more general overview and concept plan that should describe the parameters of the impacts, the extent of the impacts. And there is a tremendous lack of specificity. But, and this has been confirmed by Mr. Zola at an earlier meeting, if the EIR is judged complete and adequate by you, then the mitigation and measures that are in the plan and the monitoring plan would be the only ones required unless there are new impacts that are not yet known. And what that'll mean is that as things go on, you won't be changing the mitigation measures unless you have a new and large impact. So that's important to reflect upon, I think, and you can speak to him about it. I also believe that there is no justification for allowing significant unavoidable impacts, that if it's significant unavoidable, there really aren't overriding considerations that justify those impacts. As far as the housing is concerned, the extent of the contamination is documented as far as the number of volatile organic compounds that are present in OU1, coming down from Schlegge, and in a little bit of OU2. Whatever is in the landfill is really not well-documented. It's an unengineered landfill. And the degree of the risk is really unknown. Unless, if you consider that if you don't know the impacts of certain chemicals, then how can you say that you know how risky it is? And there are many chemicals in the mix that have not been thoroughly examined. And there are chemicals also in that mix, including hydrocarbons such as benzene, which have recently been judged to be more toxic than they had been thought to be before. That may, when you have dozens, maybe 100 different chemicals, it's quite possible that there will be others that also have that fate. Also, when considering housing or any other development here, there is the sea level rise issue to contend with and the seismic risk, which may be, they may be able to be taken care of, but it would require certainly a high standard in order to do so. When it comes to housing, the units that are proposed are 80% or 85% market rate. And in the Bay Area, in this county, there are only 14% of the people who can afford to purchase a market-rate home. That's 13% in San Francisco. And I think, who are you building these units for? You're not building for people who live here because they can't afford to buy them. I would suggest that the Peking Handicraft Land and the Levinson Land are better places to put housing than on the Baylands. Less dangerous, a better environment in terms of air quality, and also open space because they're right on the edge of the open space.
All right, thank you, Clara.
Are we, are we all way out?
Yes, you are. Actually, a little bit over, too, so... Unless there's something that you need to just, like, say 15 seconds?
15 seconds?
Yeah, please. Just, we're considered for the rest of the hour.
Okay, sorry. I've been talking slowly because I usually talk too fast. The water issue is an agreement that is really an agreement to make an agreement, and there's a couple of issues that are not resolved about how much water is available, including the maintenance of metal land that is part of SFPU's examination, I mean, probably obligation. And the Modesto Irrigation District wrote you all a very angry letter about not talking to them, and I believe that they're probably, they may not be very helpful to you. Because six months a year, their irrigation canals are closed. And I know there's paper and there's reality, but the reality is, is that the water may not be available that you think is available. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Clara. All right, April Eng?
Good evening, council members. My name is April Venarosian Eng. I'm a legislative staffer for Supervisor Jane Kim from San Francisco. And we're, I don't want to repeat all of the things that were previously said about the lack of affordability and being in an unprecedented affordability crisis. But I am here to say that, to implore to you that each city in the region does need to do its fair share. And just as maybe you all may not appreciate, people from San Francisco coming to your council meeting necessarily to tell you what to do. It was very shocking to us also to read that San Francisco should produce all the housing necessary for the region. Supervisor Kim has been a leader in San Francisco in terms of affordable housing. I am on her land use team, and most, the majority of housing in San Francisco has been built in our district, in District 6, which also includes the Mission Bay that was previously discussed. And not only has she been a leader for housing, she's been a leader for affordable housing. And so it is incumbent upon all of us to think about how to house the Bay Area as we continue to luckily produce the number of jobs that we're producing. But I also want to say that the supervisor has been pro-housing and pro-community, so I am happy to be here to hear what residents of Brisbane have to say about development in their community, because we have been able to negotiate things of community benefits to the community and in particular, affordable housing in San Francisco. The supervisor has drafted a resolution urging San Francisco to monitor what is taking place in Baylands and for the city to review any development proposal for the Brisbane.
Is that the resolution to annex the Baylands into San Francisco?
It does. State annexation.
You can give that.
And I will happily give it to your city administrator.
Okay.
And there was, I was, there is mention of annexation, but I think there are plenty of solutions short of that that will include more housing, take consideration the needs of the city, and the need to produce more housing in our region.
Thank you, April. All right. Diana Reddy, please.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Diana Reddy. I'm a veteran leader with Faith in Action, which is formerly Peninsula Interfaith Action and formerly co-chair, twice co-chair of Faith in Action, which is a federation of multi-faith congregations in San Francisco, San Mateo, and Northern Santa Clara County, representing thousands of families in those communities. We're here tonight because we're very concerned about social justice issues and particularly concerned about working families and it's so important for them to have jobs with prevailing wages and affordable housing. Thousands of our families have been displaced from San Mateo County alone in just this last year. And I just learned that an affordable housing development in Daly City that's just about to open has over 7,000 applications. A commercial development of 2 million square feet would generate over 10,000 jobs. And the thought of creating, of not providing any housing would be a tragic consequence for Brisbane and for the region. To those who are not so familiar with affordable housing, I can say that truly affordable housing is deed-restricted for all the levels of affordability. And so there is assurance that, I'm sure that there will be market-rate housing proposed, but we would insist also, and hope that you would insist, that there be percentages of affordable housing. We do urge you to consider housing if you are going to consider commercial development. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Diana. All right, Zach Ross? Or Zale?
Ross.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you. I am Zach Ross. I'm here on behalf of Assemblyman Kevin Mullen, and I'm just going to read a very brief statement that he wrote to you guys, I suppose. As you consider the development of the Brisbane Baylands project, I sincerely hope that you take every opportunity to incorporate a strong balance of housing as well as jobs, both of which contribute to a sustainable community. The peninsula and the entire Bay Area continue to be impacted by traffic congestion and lack of housing, and the Baylands project presents a tremendous opportunity for people to live where they work, and of course, vice versa, as well as reducing regional traffic congestion. It's the right thing to do for this and future generations. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Zach. Leo Tenjua... I'm sorry. I've really butchered that, didn't I? Tenjua...
It's a tough one. Hi, I'm Leora Tenjua. I am the Policy Director for the Housing Leadership Council. We've endorsed UPC's proposal, and we're very much in support of the housing that they are putting forward. I'm speaking sort of on behalf of the organization, but I'm also going to talk about my personal experience. I've lived on the peninsula since I was 10 years old, and my grandparents live in the Bay Area, and this is home. And it feels like home partially because I live in my family's house still, which was the same place that I lived when I was in high school. I'm about 30 years old. I'm a professional. I went to grad school, and I still can't afford to live here. And I crunched some numbers the other day, and I won't be able to, given that I work for a nonprofit. Maybe I could own a condo someday, but I know that I'll never be able to buy a house in this wonderful place where I grew up. I've watched the Bay Area change a lot in my 18 years here. I've watched my friends move away because there's simply not a way that they can afford to live here. I've seen them postpone having kids because they can't afford another bedroom for their kids. And, you know, being a Bay Area kid, you know, the NorCal-Socal rivalry was something I really relished. Everyone knows that San Francisco's better than Los Angeles, the Giants are better than the Dodgers. Everyone knows. But one of the biggest reasons is that we don't have the traffic that Socal has, right? Like, it's awful down there. Except that changed recently. Traffic is terrible. We have to structure our lives around, you know, what's happening on 280 or 101. And I'm on 101 twice a day, and if you build just offices like the, like the planning commission is recommending, my quality of life will absolutely be impacted. I'm a member of the Bay Area community. I'm a member of the workforce here, and it would be irresponsible for you guys to ignore voices like mine as you make the decision about the Baylands. I love it here. I have so much pride in this place, and I can't stand to see my friends leave, good teachers leave, good organizers, great people. And so I urge you guys to take this opportunity to make this region an inclusive region, a sustainable one, and most importantly, a forward-thinking one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cliff?
Madison?
It appears that since you had your initial calculation of slips, that we've gotten a considerable amount more. Can you, do you mind counting how many are left?
We have about a dozen.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, actually, I think now we have about 11. So if, you know, with that rate, we'd finish at 10:30, and that's what I was thinking, that 10:30 would be the cutoff time.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I'm not making no decision. You know, it's funny, all we're hearing about is yes on housing, no on housing, and that's it. I mean, for the most part, and quite honestly, we're not even close to that.
There's a whole lot more.
Now, and it's like, yeah, no, yeah, no, and it's like... We're about seven, eight months away from even having a deliberation on stuff, you know? It's just going to take a long-ass time. And if everybody shows up and keeps saying the same thing over and over again, you know, it's going to take years before we get through this process, you know? Yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. That's all I'm hearing. And, you know, get that a point. You know, just tell me yes, tell me no. I mean, all these things is just like, dig, 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 you know?
All right, so Kate Downing, please.
Good evening. My name is Kate Downing. I'm a former Planning and Transportation Commissioner for the city of Palo Alto. I'm also co-founder of Palo Alto Forward, Peninsula Forward, and a board member of CARLA, which is currently suing the city of Lafayette for not building housing. We Californians, we're proud people. We get a lot of things wrong, but we get a lot of things really right. We have three things to which I think we have a pretty fair claim, though. We're extremely proud of our beautiful lands and our efforts to preserve them and to rehabilitate them. We're extremely proud of our inclusive and diverse culture, a culture that makes us not just the world's leading exporter of innovation and technology, but culture itself. And we're extremely proud of our role as the nation's leader with respect to sustainability and global warming. So it is with great sadness that I reviewed this city's proposals and conclude that they might be the most un-Californian thing I've ever seen. This site should be rehabilitated. You have a developer willing to pay money themselves to do it and not take taxpayer money. Take their money. I hear things here about the soil, and I am really perplexed about why it's okay for people to spend 12 or 18 hours a day in offices on that soil, but it's not okay for them to spend eight hours a night sleeping in the house on the same soil. Very perplexed. Make room for the next generation of young families, just like your parents' generation made room for you. Building billions of square feet of office space and no housing is a recipe for unabated traffic and gridlock, displacement of existing residents, and willfully irresponsible greenhouse gas emissions, directly antithetical to hundreds of laws passed by our state legislature aimed at doing our part to stem global warming. Brisbane, are you doing your part? Brisbane is now a case study on all things wrong with local control. I implore you, prove us wrong.
All right, thank you. All right, David Needham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So upon review of the planning commission's recommendation on the use of Brisbane Baylands, I just wanted to express my concern that it would not, I think, address all the components of sustainability that Brisbane should consider when evaluating alternative uses of the land. In that context, when discussing sustainability, typically there's the following components: environmental, economic, and social. And those are both in context of business, but also macroeconomic kind of views. And in that context, I feel that, in my opinion at least, the planning commission's proposals weighted most heavily towards environmental sustainability, which, while incredibly important, a land use and development recommendation should also seek to strike the balance between economic, social, and environmental. So if the balance is not stricken, I feel like at some juncture, all the constituents involved aren't going to win, those constituents being both the city, the community, the greater Bay Area, and of course, you know, the developer. So when I think about what it is that we need to do, it's really about how do we create something that can deliver all the elements of sustainability that the planning commission wishes to see, but that also helps in create a broader... wishes to see, but that also helps in create a broader ecosystem. So to deliver the environmental sustainability, I think we would all like to see, there must be suitable economics for both the landowner, the developer, to warrant their investment, because it's going to cost a lot of money to rehabilitate this land. So what I hope that we can kind of think about is delivering the various elements of the project that are really required. And in that context, being able to deliver kind of the economic sustainability elements that we would like to see by having mixed-use elements, having some things that were part of the general community plan that were proposed, kind of brought back into the mix, because ultimately, all of those components create kind of that whole sustainability, not just environmental. And, you know, it's my belief that if we're able to address all those components, that we can create an actual ecosystem, that would be something that all of us would be really proud of. So I'm not here to say yes or no on housing, I'm actually asking us to think about the various elements of sustainability that go into planning a broader, community-focused plan.
All right, thank you, David. All right, so based upon the amount of slips that I do have, I keep getting additional ones, and I want to make sure that we do hear from everybody. So if we can keep it at two minutes, and hopefully, we can get through all the slips that are here before me. Okay, so, thank you, Ingrid.
Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Yeah, I heard something from the consultant tonight, and I think it's a conception of most of the community at the moment tonight, is that we are asking, those that want housing there, are asking Brisbane to take on the housing needs of the region. We are not. We're asking you to take on the housing needs of Brisbane if you develop this project with those jobs. If you're going to, all the projects are going to create a great number of jobs, and those people are going to be employees that need to live somewhere. And what's your, and their jobs in your community benefiting your community, those businesses will be benefiting your community, you should be responsible for helping those people find places to live, as opposed to asking San Francisco to do that. And vice versa, San Francisco shouldn't be asking you guys to provide their housing. And so I just want to make that clear to you. The second thing is, I've written you a couple of letters, among one of which I included a matrix which looks subtle like this, you may or may not remember it, you've probably got so many tons of letters, but it was trying to put the number of jobs in relationship to the number of housing units. And the number of jobs in the EIR are grossly understated. They're using square footage per job in the EIR, which is not at all reasonable, in terms of 447 square feet for commercial, where something like 150 to 200 square feet per job is in there. And I included actually some, a couple of references from architectural magazines that talk about how architects design square footage. So the numbers that we're talking about then is something like, the developer's proposal could create up to 30,000 jobs. That's 20,000 housing units required. Even the Planning Commission's could come up to close to 10,000 jobs, that's 6,500 housing, because 1.5 is the ratio you use. And so I ask you to look back at that, ask the consultant to go back to the EIR and recalculate those numbers, because they are incorrect. They were based on 1998 data, and this is 2006, and this is Silicon Valley, and in Silicon Valley, the jobs are crammed into the units. So please, help yourselves, housing is for you guys, not for San Francisco, not for me, I live in San Carlos, you know, it's for you guys.
Thank you, David. We have the developer Jonathan Charfman. Did you want to speak, Jonathan? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Lenz and council members. It's good to see you again after seven years, and the first three years that you considered our project. And I want to also acknowledge the very, very diligent work of the staff on this, and also the community, with an acknowledgement that your community is just fiercely proud of your character and your heritage, and I just want to say how much I personally respect that, and we respect that moving forward. And I say that because I recognize that you have a very difficult set of decisions before you, for a lot of reasons that have been articulated and will be over the coming months. Of the three primary concerns I wanted to express tonight, Mr. Needham covered one major area around asking you to truly consider the three legs of sustainability. But I would also ask, after 11 years of review of this project, that you expedite your review and move forward to recommendations as soon as possible. And to help facilitate that, please, again, review the comments from the Planning Commission hearings, so that you, to Councilmember Conway's point, don't have to hear the same concerns by folks, hearing after hearing after hearing, but you can just acknowledge that you have heard those concerns before. And lastly, I would invite the mayor, while you're down in Los Angeles collecting your Sustainability Award at the League of Cities, to come over to the U.S. Green Building Council's Green Build Conference, where for 25 years, we have been discussing best practices and implementation of sustainability practices around the world, and of which I'm a founding member. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jonathan.
Hi, I'll try to be as brief as I can. I really wanted to address some of the comments that people have made tonight. I think that there's a failure to understand that Brisbane is building housing, that according to San Mateo County, we should try to build 280 units for our size of a city, and that we do have plans in the works, that we are addressing that issue. There's a lot of concerns, people talked about being priced out of the Bay Area. This is nothing new, this has been going on since the Gold Rush days. I moved down to Brisbane 16 years ago, because I was forced out of San Francisco at that time. You know, I'm a renter, so this is not a new issue. This is always going to be with us in the Bay Area, because people love living here. Other people have addressed the fact that there is no guarantees of affordability if housing is built, everyone's talking about affordable housing, that's not going to be the majority of the housing out there. I thought it was very inappropriate that the Chronicle did not do any homework, and when they wrote their articles, it was absolutely shameful that they did not mention one thing about this being a toxic landfill, and the toxicities of the land there. Someone said that it had been coming to, oh, to our meetings for one year. Well, I've been coming since our first one, which I think was probably about 12 years ago. And I think the most important thing is that we are trying to prevent another Love Canal. People say, "Oh, we'll take the risk, we'll move out there." That's great until you decide to sue, and then we are going to be on the hook for that. So whatever we do, we have to do deliberately and very carefully. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Tom Leinberger. I am not a Brisbane resident. I live in Redwood City, and I've been watching a sad situation happen in Redwood City that I think is happening in over the entire Bay Area. Even Santa Rosa passed rent stabilization, rent control, and now five cities in the Bay Area have it on the ballot. And what's happened in Redwood City is, last year, 144 apartment buildings were purchased, and all those apartments have gone from being relatively low-income apartments into being gouging, expensive apartments. In one case, 10 families lived in, at 910 Clinton, and they had lived there, one woman was in her 80s, she had lived there over 40 years. A limited liability partnership bought that property and kicked out everyone. In a place I was at just last week in San Mateo, there were eight families being evicted. They were given a $300 increase, two weeks later, they were all given eviction notices. The kids had just started school. Displacement has a horrendous effect on people. In San Mateo County, five elderly women have died since they started these eviction things. They've lived in the same place for years, someone wealthy comes in and buys it, doubles or triples the rent, out they go, their fixed income, and that's the end of that. And for schoolchildren, what does it mean when you're torn out of your school after you've been there? You lose your friends, you lose your community, and you have to move out somewhere where you can afford to live, and all of a sudden, you don't have a dad anymore. You have a couch potato with children. And this is what's happening all over the entire Bay Area, all over, and it's just horrendous. And you have a chance to do something, a little something about it. If 20% of 4,000 units of housing can be kept in low income, that is some solution. So what I'm seeing in Redwood City is teachers are getting the boot, EMTs are getting the boot. All kinds of employees who make regular working-class incomes are getting the boot.
Tom?
Thank you.
All right, Lynda Detmer, please. Okay, thank you. Glenn Fieldman?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Last night, I attended a meeting, actually a transportation forum, held by Sustainable San Mateo County. And one of the first speakers said something very interesting. This is concerning a plan by Caltrans to widen 101, to add lanes, to try to deal with the traffic congestion. And a number of speakers at the meeting criticized this plan, because they said if you widen the lanes, things get better for a little while, maybe a few months, and then more people start driving, and it fills up again. And I thought, this reminds me of a discussion that's happening in Brisbane about building housing. I think we're part of a region, and we should do our share, and probably more than that. I would like to see housing built on the industrial park, and those businesses relocated to the Baylands, I think that would be more a safe strategy. But I think the notion that we can build our way out of the Bay Area's housing problem and solve the jobs-housing imbalance that way is diluted. I think, you know, regional cooperation has been mentioned a number of times tonight. I would like to see this region cooperate on things like informing businesses that want to relocate to this area, that if they want to move in here, that they need to pony up to pay for the transportation improvements, which right now, we cannot afford. I think businesses have been coming in, they've been bringing, you know, tech is big here, bringing high-paying jobs in here, people are getting evicted. I'm a professor at San Francisco State, I make what most teachers make, I rent, I'm worried about the housing crisis too. But I think what is endangering me and a lot of other people is that we have a flood of new businesses and industries that are paying very high salaries, and we are inviting them in here, in some cases, giving them tax breaks, without making them pay the full cost of what they're doing to this region. And I think that side of the equation has to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was at that same meeting too, yesterday. What was not mentioned is that Mayor Ed Lee nearly halved the corporate tax in San Francisco, because he was sick and tired of those workers going down to Redwood City to work at Facebook to attract those workers to San Francisco, which brought in Salesforce, Twitter, Facebook, and because they've nearly halved the corporate tax, they've generated more jobs than housing. Now, New York's got this thing called the 80/20 rule. The 80/20 rule, are you familiar with the 80/20 rule? You are? Okay, that's where, if you build housing, 20% has got to be low-income housing, guaranteed. It's worked for the Bronx, it's worked for the Tetements, it's done a great, San Francisco's ignored that, so talk about regional respect. Oh, by the way, I'm Danny Ames of Brisbane, 1984. And also, I invite anybody who's coming to Brisbane from out of town to drive down Tunnel Road, look at the Kinder Morgan Tank Farm, and look at this building right here, and you'll see that it's four feet in the air with the foundation ripped out, because this is all settled. This is crappy land. Now, you're out of your minds if you think you want to build on that stuff. It is really toxic. Anyhow, I'm almost out of time here. Thank you again. I'd like to thank everyone for coming in from out of town, and again, I invite you to take a look at Tunnel Road, okay? And we're not against housing, we're just, we want appropriate housing, we want housing to be put in appropriate places in Brisbane. We're being demonized, it feels like, for, you know, "Oh, we're against this Baylands project." Don't let that fool you, we're not being demon, we are strong, we're independent, we're going to govern ourselves and not be bullied by the other regional forces, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, council. What I want to say is that all of this talk about housing and trying to solve the housing problem, I agree, we have a problem with that. But none of this may even happen when and if the high-speed rail comes through here. And what I see happening is, and this was talked about at the Planning Commission meetings, and I've been involved with this project for 12 years, and sat till late at night, and I'm sorry that so many people have left, and we'd never had pizza parties while we were deliberating over all these things. But I wanted to say that if high-speed rail comes through here, that there won't be, that's going to take a majority of the part that would have been dedicated to housing or commercial or whatever. And that could be, and I feel that there's kind of, under the guise of trying to get all these people to come from San Francisco and other parts around the Peninsula to talk about the need for housing, is really the developers wanting it to be zoned for housing, because that will increase the value of the land in the event of imminent domain.
Thank you, council members. My name's Deb Horn, I'm a fairly new resident of Brisbane, just under three years, and I would travel along Tunnel Road to the city, and I'd think, "What's up with all this vacant land? Why aren't we using this land?" And then I learned about Baylands, and I learned, "Hmm, this developer's going to clean it up. Why aren't we letting them pay to clean it up and doing something?" So I felt as many people who have spoken tonight, "Why are we passing up this opportunity?" So I decided to learn more. I was excited, when I was excited about cleanup, I had visions of trucks coming and hauling all the dirty soil and taking it somewhere else, and it was going to be cleaned up. And I was at a Planning Commission meeting, and there was a big discussion at one of the meetings about, "We can't plant trees in residential areas." Well, why is that? Well, because the roots could permeate the cap. And I thought, "Cap? What's a cap? We're cleaning up the soil, we're putting it in trucks and taking it away." And so there's a lot of questions, and then what I learned is, "Hmm, how can this land not be safe for trees, but be safe for people?" And what I learned is that it's not being cleaned up, it's being remediated, and that is, an impermeable cap is put over the toxins. This is a cap that can be permeated by tree roots. This is a cap that if there's an earthquake, a medium-sized earthquake, because this is a liquefaction zone, can be permeated. This is a cap that with sea rise and waters rising, lichate, which is the toxins mixed with water, that rises. So it's not being cleaned up. That's what I want to say. And like Danny says, it's crappy land. And if it was being cleaned up, I'd be up here saying, "Yay, let's do housing." You know, let's do all these things, but... But it's not being cleaned up. That's the point. So this is why Brisbane, I'm going to wrap up, is against building homes on this land. It's not safe for people. This is why many people in Brisbane want this to be an area where we have renewable energy, where people don't live there, where we generate energy, we impact climate change. And I'll just cut it off here, but that is our regional contribution.
Thank you, Deb. All right, Madeline Bernard.
Hello, I'm Madeline Bernard. I'm from San Mateo. I've previously lived in almost every city in the Bay Area. I had to speak tonight because I was hit by a car on my bicycle on my way to the meeting, so, like, come on. And I caged a ride from him because the chain came off the bicycle. And he was in a 450,000-mile car, driving from his job at Candlestick Park to Tracy, where he lives. So, I mean, these are people who are basically in your community. As you can probably tell, I'm on the pro-housing side. But what you guys are focused on is Brisbane, that's your constituency. So you, I think, need the people. A couple of your two Brisbane people who spoke very early on were like, were concerned that Brisbane might get completely swallowed by another city. If you had more people, that would be less of a danger. Your Planning Commission had preserved the character and culture of Brisbane as part of the ideas that they were going for. People would help you with that. Like, maybe you could get a community theater, maybe you could get a farmer's market, if you had more people to help support that kind of plan. Okay, the internet didn't know about it, sorry. So, yeah, the internet didn't know about these things. Maybe you could get some web developers. So what I'm saying is, your budget is 15 million a year. The Airbnb CEO is worth 3.3 billion. You guys, I think it would help you out to have some more people. Also, Mountain View, Superfund sites, Lenny Siegel's been working on that since the '70s, 40 years, but he's still pro-housing. He is pro-housing on the ex-Superfund site that got cleaned up. It can be done.
All right. Thank you, Madeline. All right, excuse me, if someone... We've been doing great tonight, right? So we're almost there. I know it's been, you know, just a couple of hours of testimony, and we really appreciate all the feedback that you've been providing. So I just have just a handful of slips. Let's get through them. And Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. You know, my grandmother also got pushed out of San Francisco because it got too expensive, and that was in 1930, and she came to Brisbane. You know, I feel really bad because life going forward from this point is not going to be the life that we lived, that I lived. And that's just the way it is. It's a different world. There are over 7 billion people on the planet now, okay? And I'm sorry that all the millennials here aren't going to be able to afford to buy a house, i.e., use over half my income on housing. And they talk about denying their future. Well, what future are they going to have if we don't address the real issues, and it's not housing? It's overpopulation, global warming, energy consumption, water consumption. Okay, we have an opportunity here to actually make a sizable contribution, not for housing, but for renewable energy, and to set an example of sustainability of renewable energy right here in the Bay Area, and that's what we should be doing. Not building more housing that's going to disappear into the housing units, 4,400 and whatever units. San Francisco could gain that much if they just cleaned up the people who are abusing rent control, okay? They could gain three times that amount of units, like that, if they cleaned up their own mess. And so we've been a good regional partner for all of the cities around us. We took San Francisco's garbage, we still take San Francisco's garbage, okay? We saved the mountain. We preserved one of the most incredible, the last remnants of the Franciscan habitat. And Treasure Island, sorry, it's going down. They're not building housing on Treasure Island. It's too toxic. It's going to become a swamp and then be swallowed by the bay. So get your facts straight, too. So happy birthday, Brisbane. 55 years ago, on September 21st, we became a city. Clark's father, and my father, and three other brave council people acquired the Baylands so that we could have a better future. Let's make that the better future that they envisioned for us by supporting renewable energy and sustainability. Not more housing, entertainment centers, 8 million square feet of office space. Let's do the right thing. That is dirty, polluted land. People should not be living on it or working on it for long periods of time.
All right. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
J, it looks like J-U-R-I-D-I-N? Okay.
Joel Diaz.
Oh, sorry, it is Joel Diaz, yeah. I didn't know you were a doctor.
I was writing my name, I didn't want them to see outside.
I thought you were a Realtor, not a physician.
Looking over my shoulder, so I was like...
You got a new name now.
Good evening, Honorable City Council, Joel Diaz. So, you know, Michelle's a tough act to follow, so I'm going to just try and get through this here. It was really moving what she had to say. There's a lot of assumptions. I've been through the whole Planning Commission process, I went to almost all the meetings, so I've been through this, and I realize there are a lot of assumptions made. And we have to be really careful not to just make assumptions. And a lot of things can have several meanings to them. I've noticed in the EIR, you can read them different ways. The housing thing, I get it, but, you know, it's not going to be balanced. The way it is proposed in this plan from the developer, in the specific plan under 9.4.3, there's going to be phasing, phase one and phase two. The commercial phase is set to begin some 20 years from now. And that's if there's financing, and they were counting on the redevelopment agency financing, which is gone. So that means it's going to be even longer than 20 years. So this isn't a sustainable, balanced development anymore. What they're talking about is just the housing. And in the key findings of the fiscal analysis that was done, the housing portion shows a 2.1 million deficit. So it's not fair for us to sustain a deficit for that length of time. The other assumption is that it can be safe, and we just don't have the adequate studies to determine that right now. We have to do more risk assessments. Dr. Lee did a lengthy report about this, and his findings were, right in the beginning, inadequate regulatory and monitoring investigations. For example, the CDM study of 2005, they admit it's incomplete. Dr. Lee says it's incomplete. They didn't have any development plans to look at. Many of the monitoring wells were not accessible, they couldn't even find them. Dr. Lee says the technology they used was substandard, the methods they used were substandard. So there are a lot of other assessments that can be done. And, you know, they told you, and it also says in the EIR 2.4.44 under Master Response is that the specific plan will be adopted after the Regional Water Quality Control Board and DTSC create the remedial action plans. That's when you adopt the specific plan, not now. The only thing you can do is adopt the concept plan. And for this application, they're one and the same thing. The concept plan and the specific plan are the same thing. But before you do, you can still do additional human health risk assessment studies. There's no reason why you can't do that. Dr. Lee suggests that we do that. We should have ongoing studies, and not just test once, but test continually. And what he says is, you can't assume that other chemicals won't make themselves apparent in these tests, and we have to use higher technology. About the survey that was done...
That...
Oh, sorry, am I done?
Yeah, you...
You know, I think, it's okay, I'm going to leave, but I just want to say, I think Brisbane deserves a fair chance to speak, because a lot of other people got to speak, and, you know, the developer and people from out of the area. So it'd be nice if some of us could have a little bit more time. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Tony Varios, Brisbane resident and businessperson. First off, I'm mayor and city council. I applaud you for the way you run the meeting tonight. And I want to say that I think it's very unfortunate that so many people come down to Brisbane to tell us their ideas, all very well-educated people, we could tell from the way they spoke. Apparently, they don't realize that Brisbane has a pretty high education level itself among its residents. And we're not, as some newspaper hacks said, a sleepy little town. We're wide awake, we know what we're doing, City Council is on top of it, the Planning Commission was on top of their job, City hired an excellent consultant, and the staff are doing good work. I want to say that there's four ways to live in the Bay Area. You can be a very high-wage earner, you can inherit property, you can bleed to pay your mortgage like most of us are, or you can be homeless, and then we'll take care of you. Because that's what San Francisco and many of the big cities spend a great portion of their budget doing. I'd like to see if it's possible for our tech geniuses to do a far better job matching individuals where they live to where their job is. I'm one of the very few that's fortunate, who doesn't work from home, but lives within a mile of home and work, so technically, we could walk to work. And so, as some other people said here, we don't put a lot of miles on the car, even though we have a couple. I think it's extremely unfair for anybody to portray Brisbane as backward or not doing its regional job in terms of building housing. Obviously, they haven't driven around Brisbane and seen all the housing that's being built in, as infill lots, in Brisbane, central Brisbane, as well as all the homes that people buy that were a crappy old shack, then they bought it, stripped it down, built it out brand-new, and even expanded it. And so there's a lot of construction going on here. And then, in around 1997, when Viewpoint The Ridge was started after Altamar, the northeast ridge construction added something like close to 477 homes. What did that do to Brisbane? That was an increase of something like maybe 25%, 30% on the population growth. Tell me another city in San Mateo, tell me another city in the Bay Area that's grown 30% that didn't want to, like Tracy or Danville Pleasant, in those places where they turned farmland into houses, okay?
If you could wrap it up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And so, as far as the Baylands are concerned, it was bay fill, it should have never been filled, but it was filled. You want to fulfill the negative feature of that, put houses all over it, make it look like Visitation Valley. Choosing against the common uses of housing, retail, and industrial, you have choices. You could make it open space, it's a much higher use, like the mountain itself. And if we took a huge tower, as much as people would hate this concept, if we took a huge tower and put it up there on the transit area, then you've got real density, and that would pay for everything else. I could support that. I know most people wouldn't go for it, but that would be visionary, nothing we're hearing yet is.
Thank you, Tony. All right, last speaker, Greg Anderson.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, my name is Greg Anderson. I'm a Planning Commissioner, but I'm speaking as an individual, I don't speak for the council. I don't speak for the commission. Right. Thank you.
Or your wife.
You have got a lot of work ahead of you. Not only do you have a pile of meetings to go through before we even get to land use decisions, once you make a land use decision, then we're going to have to go back, going to have to look at all of the mitigation measures, and decide specifically what each one of those means to the city. We have to look very carefully at that site. It's been said before that the site's not desirable. Millennial Tower has been mentioned before. Millennial Tower was built completely to code, they did everything right, they put the piers down until they hit the PSI. If you go over that, you're going to have building problems. So I'm not saying we don't build, I'm saying there's risk to building here. Individual homeowners are not well-equipped to deal with that risk. I'm out of time, I have more to say, but I'll say it on another night.
I have 30 more seconds.
You've got 30 seconds, Greg, if you want to finish up. You've got 30 seconds, yeah. We're not like the...
All right.
Unlimited time, sorry.
I feel bad for the people who've come here to speak about the housing crisis. It's real. People need housing. I strongly encourage the City Council to consider how much housing we can safely build in other areas of Brisbane. However, we also have to worry about the failure conditions. People have asked, they say that we want more fill, infill, to preserve the other areas outside in the countryside. On the countryside, we have farms that are completely fallow, because the way our water rights work is, you get your water rates, you pay for your water rates, you always pay for your water rates, but you only get the water that's there. So we have farmland that has paid for their entire water allocation, and they got zero. So we're going to run out of resources, and we have to decide which spaces we want to have the risk of Millennial Towers and what people we're going to put there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Greg. All right, so again, I want to thank everybody. I mean, we set a time of 10:30, and we made it 10:35, and we went through a ton of slips. Excellent feedback, you know, I know the council has absorbed it, and it's all part of the public record, and this is, you know, just the first of many meetings that we'll have to really get at the issues and hopefully create a great development that, you know, we'll all be proud of. So Clark?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just, you know, I wanted to say something to kind of Tony Varios' point, because, you know, I was, I've been on the council, I've been going into my 20th year on this, and was originally elected in 1993, and I retired for four years voluntarily, not involuntarily. And Brisbane was about a little bit under 3,000 people population, and today, it's about 4,700, and that's an increase population-wise of over, close to 53%. And I don't know of any other city on this whole Bay Area that's grown that much. We're a small town, we're a small town by choice, and, you know, that's something we've done a long time ago. But we're not anti-housing or anti-growth. Our jobs balance is about the same as it was 24 years ago. We've had a major employer leave, a couple of them, so, you know... To the irresponsible reporters at the San Francisco Inquirer, get your facts together. And if you're here tonight, please stand up. And if you're not, you know, I hope you listen to the recording of this.
That's right.
All right. Okay, so, you know, we, like I had mentioned, we had received quite a bit of written communication, and, you know, we are acknowledging that, it's going to be all part of the record. You know, just a couple of things for the council. So, you know, we have our schedule, our tentative hearing date, the next one is going to be November 17th. So Clark and I, we are on the Bayland Subcommittee. And we were talking about, you know, again, the need for more communication, education with the community. And here we have the sustainability framework based on the One Planet Living's 10 principles. But we felt that it would be very helpful to have one of the co-founders of BioRegional, who is the ones that created One Planet Living, to come and do a presentation here in Brisbane. And so we are going to do that, and hopefully, before our meeting on the 17th, we'll pick a date that works for council members, and we will have that presentation for the entire community. And then, just talking with City Manager Clay Holstein, when there was an issue that came up when I first was on the council, that was a big-ticket item for the community, and it was the development of the, the final development of the Northeast Ridge and housing. And one of the things that our city attorney and staff had done was to have these advisory meetings with the council prior to the... meetings with the council prior to the hearing to help provide greater insight to each item. And Lori brought her, you know, her big, thick document of the EIR. I mean, there's so much information in there, right? And so I'm just putting it out there, council members can do it if they want, it's something that I'm going to do, is, you know, to meet with staff on, you know, prior to our hearing meetings, to get more insight, to ask, so that we can ask questions of staff and of Lloyd, you know, so that we're better prepared, so that when, say, there's questions that we have of Lloyd, right, we could ask them, say, the day before or two days before, so that then when he comes to the meeting and we ask the question again, he can provide an answer, rather than, okay, I'll get back to you. Just so that we make the meetings more productive for us and for all of you. So I'm just putting that out there. All right, so I will take a motion to adjourn to our next council meeting.
So moved.
All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, thank you very much for attending tonight's meeting.